I think we rely too heavily on them. Um, and I think that, um, when one looks at what the town, um, commits itself to by, um, by so- by using some of the things that they do, and I, what I mean by that is, uh, there are some federal guidelines that then you, um, have the town get tangled up in. Um, I think that, um, at times, uh, a voice that, um, might bring those things to the table is good. Um, obviously, one person of a multi-member board can't, can't do much other than, than bring observation and suggestion, so, um, I, I think the fact that, um, I view myself as a, um, a diligent, um, hardworking, uh, person with regard to whatever I'm doing, um, brings, uh, brings, uh, a good useful, um, viewpoint.
Don't you think because, uh, so many of the members, uh, new members comparatively new, they aren't people that have been in town, I don't know, the longest time, but the majority of them are brand-new, when you wanna say.
Yeah, I, I would be too, and as an alternate member, yep, as an alternate member, yeah, as an alternate member, I'd, I'd view it more of a, 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 a learning, you know, and, and, well, maybe not a stepping stone, but a, um, uh, another way to give back when I can. Um, and, uh, again, because I usually involve myself to the nth degree with, um, reading a lot of boring material to most. It's very exciting to me, I, I spend many nights reading. Um, it gives me, again, more opportunity to understand how, uh, we get to certain places in our town. Um, it's our town, um, I think we should have the maximum input, uh, in everything that we do and agree to. Um, and, um, and hopefully I can do that.
Is there any phase of development in town that you are anti, like, uh, farming, uh, residential, cluster, transitional, uh, business, or anything like that? Are you in favor of, of everyone, if it's done and done properly, or how do you feel?
Yeah, I, I, I can't say I'm for or against any of it, um, what I can say is I really like Litchfield the way it is. Um, so I'd have to be convinced, um, to turn it into something else. Uh, I wouldn't want it to be Hudson, um, you know, I, Hudson's got its own feel that I don't think, um, many folks enjoy, that's why they live here. Um, it's a, it's a bit slower, it's a bit more, um, rural, and, uh, a per- that's a personal thing. I happen to think that that's, you know, that's what makes Litchfield such a great town. Um, but I'm not opposed to anything necessarily.
Mr. Garrett, in the meeting of, uh, November fifth, I, in which I did not attend due to illness, um, according to the minutes of the meeting, um, you first support the elimination of the regional planning commissions in total?
Um, I don't know if I support that in total, I'm sure they believe, and some believe, that they serve a very valuable purpose. I think, um, as I've been paying attention, we, um, I think we rely on them a little too much.
In what way?
I feel that they, um, give me an example, the other night, um, there was a question of, uh, I believe it was, I believe it was multifamily housing, whether or not to bring the warrant article again this year, and it really felt as if the board had moved away from that. Um, and again, as, as a person sitting, you know, in the room or, or watching on television, it felt like the NRPC was moving that along, um, to get it back on the warrant, when it just didn't feel like the board wanted to go there, or they were under the impression that they were gonna wait another year to develop that. Um, and it, it really felt like they were pushing rather than the board asking, um, you know, at, at, or, or they being more in a supplemental role. Um, so that, that's my major concern with that, is that it, and, and I think it has a lot to do with, realistically, with what Pat was saying, in that a lot of the members are very new, and, uh, with folks being good and trusting folks, you know, they, they, um, they take things for face value. Um, and I don't know if they necessarily know or have researched what the goals are behind the Nashua Regional Planning Commission or the entire Granite State Futures.
You don't know who controls the regional planning commissions?
As in which, what, what, I mean?
Who controls the regional planning commissions?
Who controls the Nashua, well, I'm sure you're asking, 'cause you know.
Well, I've done it for twenty-plus years, but.
We do.
Right.
Yeah.
So, how is regional planning gonna take over Litchfield?
Yeah, yeah, well, that's a long conversation, that I hand, I handed.
Prepared.
Oh, I understand, well, I didn't, I wasn't prepared to bring the same documents I brought, if you have them available, I can show you. I handed them in, uh, for the minutes, the last time I was here, or I handed them into the planning board, sorry. So, if you feel, if, if you'd like, I can certainly provide them to you.
I see them.
Okay.
I also, on the minutes of the fifth, you stated that, um, you found it disturbing that the Federal Bureau perhaps decide what's best for Litchfield? How are they determining what's best for Litchfield?
Uh, in the same way that federal monies that, that come into our town, uh, be it through the school, be it through the state, um, they have, um, uh, caveats to any money that you take from them.
Can you give us an example of where they have done that?
Uh, through the Department of HUD.
I'm sorry, what?
Through the Department of HUD.
What have they done?
Uh, they provided monies, and again, it's all detailed in that report, Frank, I haven't memorized it, but I've read it a good dozen times. We can certainly go through each line if you'd like.
No, I'm not the one being interviewed for the position, I'm asking the questions because you had made the.
Certainly, certainly.
Statement that the federal government seemed to be taking over the town of Litchfield, and I'm trying to understand how you think of that.
What we, what I perfectly, I tell you, Frank, if you'd like, we can reschedule, I'll bring the documents and we can go over it again.
So, the, um, other question I have is, what, what is your opinion of impact fees?
My opinion of impact fees are that, well, I was, I was gonna have that discussion a little bit later tonight. Uh, impact fees are, um, for very specific uses. Um, they're for growth in our town that has impacted, uh, or, in other words, they're collected to mitigate the impact of growth, um, in a, in a, in a town, as in, a developer generates a new housing project that might require schools, police, fire, and there's impact fees, a schedule set, um, to deal with that growth. Um, it's not, it's not there to be used as a, a, a fund to, um, um, to, for maintenance of your buildings, or, um, um, I need new windows, so let's use impact fees.
Are you against their collection?
Oh, absolutely not. No, I think it's a very valuable way, and a very good way, to collect for growth, you know, in a community. It, it's those folks that are actually causing the need, um, catching up that payment, if you will, for folks that have been here for, you know, a, a long time. It's that growth that caused that need, it's not necessarily the fault of those folks that have been there twenty, thirty years. So, no, I, I absolutely buy into impact fees, which, I just believe they gotta be used appropriately as for what they were designed.
Can you give us an example of where you think they might, the town has misspent those impact fees?
Uh, I can't think of any at the moment, I really can't, I, I've, as I've come across them being spent, and, you know, I've only been here since two thousand and five, I've not had so far any, any issue with them, uh, to this point, that I'm aware of. You know, I haven't gone through every time they've been expended, but when I was, correct, and when I was, when I was on the school board, I know that there've been several requests to use impact fees, uh, and they were turned down, and I thought that was appropriate, 'cause they weren't based upon what impact fees were designed to do.
Any other questions? Any questions for us, Jason?
No. It's just an alternate position, right, it's not a full position right now, anyway, right?
Right, but, uh, I, I believe the, the expectation of an alternate is that.
You'll be here.
Meetings actively participate, but you can vote, is that how they work it?
Yep.
But oftentimes, those alternates serve many meetings.
Oh, yeah.
There's always a, there's always.
Fully prepared to be here for every meeting, yeah.
They have, they have one or two, or possibly even three people absent.
Oh, no, I know, I am usually here taping them, so I know that they sometimes have tough time meeting forum.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'd have time enough to do it?
Certainly.
To go on-site reviews and things like that?
Certainly.
You'd be willing to take the time?
Certainly.
And you won't be recording when you're alternating, right?
I won't.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Jason Garrett to the planning board as recommended by the planning board. Do I have a second? Um, wait, actually, do we, starting, Glenn, when's the seat open?
Um.
Did he second?
I'm just clarifying the motion first, one second.
The, the seat's available now, um, when, if, um, if you go forward, I will confirm that we're filling, which vacancy we're filling with an expiration date, and we'll put it on the, right.
On the paper, okay.
Unfortunately, was recycle people in and out, it's not a neat, so, block, so.
We'll approve the appointment based on.
Right, it's subject to, the paperwork, and then he'll be sworn in.
All right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, miss, all right. Motion made by myself, seconded by Mrs. Jewett, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained?
Aye.
Two-on-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. All right, next up is a public hearing for acceptance of volunteer fire assistance grant fund at the amount of, uh, one thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Mr. Hope?
Yep, uh, this is a, uh, grant program Fire Department participates in most years through, uh, Department of Resources and Economic Development for, uh, replacement upgrade of forestry, forest firefighting equipment. Uh, it's a fifty-fifty match, we use, you know, we plan as part of our equipment purchase to, uh, use that and leverage the state funds to stretch it further. Um, the, uh, application, um, is, uh, listed, and this is where the price comes from, down to the penny, the intention to buy eight nomex shirts, four wildland helmets, six headlamps, eighteen goggles, twenty-four pairs of gloves, and eight one-hundred-foot lengths of forestry hose.
Open the floor for public input. Seeing there is no public, I'll close any public input. Any discussion? No, I'll make a motion, we approve the grant as discussed, do I have a second?
Are there any drawstrings to it?
Just a fifty-fifty match, which we always do.
I realize that, but are there, if you must do it within a certain period of time, or otherwise, we're gonna have to make up more?
Now.
I just want, don't want any.
If, if you approve, if you approve it tonight, we will order the material tomorrow.
It's something you already, we planned to do every year.
Right, right, it, it's something we've done, we do most years, it's a, it's a good way to upgrade, you know.
I just didn't want them putting some drawstrings on it, that, if it is not ordered within a certain time, or.
Don't worry, we'll get it ordered.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, one.
Maybe you oughta tell why he abstained, because people might think he's anti-fire department.
After anybody knows what he's talking about. Do you wanna express why you abstained?
Because I'm part of the fire department, so, yeah.
And God forbid we have a forest fire, he will be wearing potentially one of those nomex shirts, the hood, and grabbing the gloves, so.
All right, our, uh, public input is not scheduled till, has started till after six-thirty, so we're gonna progress through the agenda. Administrative report, new business, library impact fees.
Library impact fees, had a re- request from the library requesting, uh, additional five hundred, uh, fifty-eight hundred dollars from impact fees for the second phase of their preliminary engineering and design. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, you approved, uh, a first phase around twenty-five hundred. Um, they, they note the second phase incorporates the data from that first phase to then do a full determination of their space needs. Um, and they also pointed out that had they realized that they had fees expiring at the end of this year, they would've expect, requested the entire project at once, rather than breaking it up into two parts.
Are they gonna lose anything on it, on their fees?
Um, yeah, that, they will, there will be fees subject to be returned, um, if, you know, whi- whi- which is what sort of prompted this, uh, follow-up request from them, saying, hey, we broke it up into two parts, and, you know, um, had we connected the dots and realized that the money was going away, we would not have done that.
Are you gonna ask? I think it's a shame that we lose these impact fees, we make such a big deal about getting them, and then we don't use them. I think that is outrageous, I certainly would know, if I had some money coming, I mean, I had some CDs coming, and I was down there the day before, I even could collect them, I made a mistake of one day, so you have to get on the ball. I think that the people that are, from their departments and all, should be aware, I mean, it's a crime when we lose money.
Okay, um, what did they get done in the first phase, have they gotten anything done?
Uh, they've just, uh, the, the first phase was the initial data collection, I think.
Yeah.
Um.
All right, that's what I recall, too.
Right, yeah, and I'm not sure where they are, where they are with that.
Additional fifty-eight hundred dollars is going to do what?
It takes the data they've collected and then puts it together and said, based on this, these are the likely space needs you need to serve this community.
Did they ever find out, the last time we talked about it, uh, they said, I brought out that, that was something I had heard, I'm not saying it was right, but I had heard that the town, when they accepted that library, it always had to stay there. And they said, you know, we heard that too, but I said, I hope you go and find out, you're not gonna take a chance on putting money into, looking for plans and all that nonsense if we don't, can't move it. So, do you know if they did? Do they have that in writing?
I have no idea, but, but that's really not what either part of this study was about, so, there is a point that they need to answer that question.
Oh, you should answer it before you go and do the study.
Well.
Why would you do a study if you can't move the library?
Because the, the answer to the study may not be move the library, the answer may be.
Do this addition.
Do something on that, on that site, or you're doing this part well, you need to think about this. There, there's not, this is not necessarily a done-deal answer to the study that says, build a new library someplace else. I agree that question needs to be answered, but that's not really where they are yet with this.
What are they going on the, on the phase two? I, I get the impression from reading this, that all that we're doing is, um, implementing these impact fees.
That's what you said, didn't you?
Right, that's what you're doing, that's what you did for sort of the, you know, the, the first and second part.
Is that the best use of, uh, impact fees for the library?
For the library, figuring out their facility, future facility needs, yes, given, um, I'd say yes, given that, um, you know, replacement facility has been, and expansion has been part of the capital improvement plan, you know, technically scheduled several years back. So, it's a logical thing to say, what do we need to be offering, and what kind of spaces are those?
I mean, we agreed the fir-, we agreed Phase One, I'm not sure why we wouldn't agree with Phase Two, and if it just allocates the funds so they can continue.
What did you say?
We have Fa-, we agreed with Phase One and authorized it, the board, I forget what the vote was. Why don't we agree with Phase Two, 'cause they, all they're saying is that we need this amount of money, and if we don't do it now, we're gonna lose the money, and.
Question is.
Should ask for it all before, anyway.
Is this fifty-eight hundred dollars, is, is that all they're gonna need to get this completed, or are they gonna be coming back and saying? No, I'm just saying, they, they, so they, they're gonna keep coming back to us and asking us for more money, right?
Yeah.
Why not just get a number and then come to us and say, well, this is what we need to do this?
Because I think, because, I think, if I recall, the results of this, this total and total, we're giving one path, giving one path or another path. And one path may be a whole new building someplace, which is gonna be a lot more expensive to design and build versus, here's what this building needs to be augmented on.
Yes, but, wait, what I'm asking, is this money gonna get them to that point?
Things gonna get, yeah, it's supposed to get them to that point where they can tell you what Path A or Path B is, and the cost of Path A and cost of Path.
And then at that point, they'll need the architectural and everything.
And right now, they don't have that, they're still trying to figure out what they gotta do, and this will get them to, to that, that, you know, and or whatever.
This will only.
It's just, it's a scratch to the surface, it's not anywhere close to what it's gonna be the total cost.
No, and that's not what I'm asking, what I'm asking is, like I just said, is it gonna get us to that point in the path, we either go this way or we go that way?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure it'll even get to that point, it'll basically get them to, here's, here's what the, the data says to serve this community, these are the kinds of spaces we need, this is how they should be aligned, um, and then, and this is what we wanna do in a building. That could eventually become the package that goes to an architect, but I don't think it gets quite, it gets to that.
It doesn't get down to the why question, or the path?
No, no, I think it gets down to a, this is blank sheet, this is what the community's needs are, and this is sort of how it programs into a building.
They came in was, the first phase was to collect the data, the second phase was just to put down, here's the requirements. It doesn't even give them a bubble diagram, if you wanna call it that, just space needs.
Yeah. So, I guess the question is, do we agree with them going forward with Phase Two? And getting it, then there's gonna be a phase three and phase four.
I don't think it's within the purview of this board to decide whether we agree or disagree with them looking at a new building.
Well, use of funds, I mean, we already authorized the first use of funds, I don't see why we, same justification's there for the second phase.
But I can't understand, why didn't they find out for sure and put it in writing what the story is? Can we?
Cause Pat.
Go ahead and add that, anything else to it, or whatever, or do we have to leave the library there?
But, I, I think.
We're not gonna build a brand-new library, I don't think.
We don't know, that's what this is gonna help them get to that point.
But number one, can they? Are you gonna throw out what you have, something that we've had for years and years and years?
I don't know if that says one way or the other, again, it may just be what we gotta do in this building to augment it. I, I don't know how much work you do with that building, but, uh, there is a point in time when you do outgrow a space you, you've had, and I don't know what, I don't know how we would dispose of the space, or not dispose of, but how would we reutilize that space, I, I don't know.
That's a deci- discussion that's way down the road, that's not really even where they are at this point yet. Right now, they're trying to figure out what is the right size fit and configuration to serve this community's needs. And then comes the question, where and how do you do that?
And can you?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, do you have to keep that spot? That's the implant part, I think. I don't wanna put any money into anything if we can't do that, I mean, you're gonna find out what was in the history. You went there and I wasn't there, but somebody was there, I wanna see it in writing.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approves the use of five thousand, eight hundred dollars from the library impact fees to the, uh, Library Board of Trustees for the implementation of Phase Two of their building analysis program.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made by Mr. Byron and seconded by Mr. Bork, further discussion? Hearing none.
Beforehand, I'm gonna vote against it, because I wanna know, what, can we do something from the, from the history of the place? That's what I wanna know before I talk about putting anything in there.
Okay, all those, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Stained, motion carries three, one, zero. All right, next up is the sale of.
A nine, no, a sale of a nineteen fifty-six Farmall tractor.
Wasn't that last used?
Fifty-six.
Yeah, probably.
Probably what, two years, three years ago?
No, it was probably about five, six years ago.
Really? What did they use it for?
What?
What did they use it for?
They tried to use it for some mowing. It had a mowing deck.
Didn't even run?
Yeah, yeah, it had a mowing deck attached to it.
Is that the one that they were gonna make a special blade so that, because it would've tipped over if they used it on the bankens?
Yeah, probably, probably.
Why didn't we do that?
Because we don't need it now, we have a, we have a bucket truck, we have a backhoe, we have the Kubota, it's not used anymore.
It is, it is not, yeah, it is.
That's antique, that's older than I am, I mean, almost.
So, here you go, so the request is for us to authorize them to sell the unit under, uh, sealed bid.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need to authorize Jason to administer the, and the road agent to administer the process.
Yeah, I just note, I mean, the reason it comes here is, you know, your purchasing policy lets me do things under a thousand. Our sense is this is hovering right around that, so, I'd like to think it's gonna go over a thousand, and then I'll have your authority accordingly.
You're gonna get one person bidding on it, I can tell you who's gonna bid on it, and I tell you that it's not gonna go for a thousand.
Really? That's fifty-seven years old, that's an old tractor.
If you could seal that debt, we'll open it with the sealed bid.
Don't let the cat out of the bag. All right, so, the motion is to, um, I'll make the motion that we authorize Jason to oversee the disposition of the nineteen fifty-six Farmall tractor under sealed bid, under the sealed bid process, do I have a second? Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Bork, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries four, zero, zero. We'll do one more, and then we'll open up public input, tax rate?
Tax rate, uh, tax rate was set November nineteenth, um, and you ratified the amount that was on the warrant sent to the tax collector. Um, the, uh, some additional background on sort of the right, where some of the rest of the numbers came out, our retained surplus is one million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars. By DRA's way of calculating it, you may remember when the auditors were here, they relayed that they use a slightly different number than DRA's number. Um, so it, that number is just over the threshold that's recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association.
Thirty.
Um, and, uh, at town meeting, we anticipated revenues about seventy thousand dollars less than actually used, um, and we had actually planned at that time to apply two hundred. Uh, and we had actually planned at that time to apply two hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to offset taxes. And those were all the numbers we rolled into our discussion of tax rate. Um, so when it came time to actually set the rate, uh, this fall, we counted the seventy thousand of higher revenues and then applied an additional hundred seventy thousand of fund balance to offset taxes. So basically, you had a net effect from when we stood at town meeting and said, this is what we thought we would do, we added a little bit more. So we had a net effect of about two hundred and forty thousand, um, offset relative to the town meeting expectation. Um, and just by way of comparison, um, the total rate of twenty fifty-seven reflects a, uh, seventy-three cent increase in the local school rate, a seven cent increase in the county rate, a three cent decrease in the town rate, and a one cent decrease in the state school rate.
So net effect is seventy-six cents increase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other que-, any questions? Okay. Moving on, we'll open, uh, we'll go to public input. Anybody in the public would like to speak, please come forward. Mr. Garrett?
Good evening.
Jason Garrett, living in Perry Court.
I'm Perry Court, thanks. Um, I was at the school board the other night and they said, boy, anybody could show up. And I said, yeah, anyone, living in Perry Court. Um, you, you all, you all probably know this, um, but I, I just wanna remind folks and, and you all, um, one of the things I take very seriously myself here in town is the default budgets. And so, um, you guys, in my opinion, have always done a great job with the default budget. Um, but since we're getting to that time where we're gonna be developing the default budget, um, I thought appropriate that, um, that we mentioned the fact that there's, there, there's four things in that language as to what should be included in that default budget and how to derive it. It's a simple math formula. It's a, it's not a fallback position, or it's not a, uh, a choice for the voters, although some might think it is. It's, it's, do you want a proposed budget or not? And then the default budget is so that we can operate. You know, it's a position of, uh, that was determined, um, through a metric, um, so that a town can continue with a budget. Um, cause if the proposed budget fails and you don't have a, and there was no default budget, you'd have essentially no budget to pay your bills. And I think obviously you here know that. Um, but many, many folks don't realize it's not a choice. It's, it's actually a, a fallback position. Um, and so, again, I'd just like to highlight the fact that, um, I appreciate the methods that you use and I hope we continue them. Um, interestingly enough, I'm glad that the topic of impact fees came up a little bit earlier. Um, because I know the school board is going to be asking this body for some impact fees. And so, I looked low and, long and hard and read a thousand things. And, uh, some important things I found, gentleman named Eric Newman, he's a real estate attorney at Gallagher and Callahan, said impact fees are intended, um, to draw a direct connection between capital improvements and increased need for services created by new development. That's not the perp-, um... Interestingly enough, the NRPC says impact fees and charges are assessed against new development to generate revenue for the construction or expansion of capital facilities required to serve that development. Cannot be used for the operation, maintenance, repair, alteration, or replacement of capital facilities. In other words, HVAC equipment or IT equipment. It can only be used to finance new facilities or to expand and enlarge existing facilities which are substandard or under capacity due to the growth of that specific development. The objective is to ensure adequate public facilities and the fees are not a panacea for generating alternate sources of funds to finance capital projects. Capital improvement expenditures for physical improvements or costs for acquisition of existing buildings, land or interests in land, construction of new buildings, structures, additions, or major alternate, um, alter, alterations, streets, highways, and utility lines. They aren't for your regular operating expenses which should be in a budget. Um, so, uh, again, I, this body has always, in my opinion, made the correct choice when it came to, uh, using, uh, impact fees. I know there's some new opinions on that with a new attorney in town. But again, when one looks at, um, the source documents, and again, everything's, I suppose, interpretation. To me, it's pretty clear, um, that it, it has to do with mitigating the growth of, uh, of the town, you know, based on development. So if a new development comes up with thirty new kids, you need to have place for them. If a town is de-, or a town's children's population is decreasing in the order in which it is over the next five years, I saw the numbers the other night, it's gonna be in eleven hundreds, right? Which just a couple of years ago would've filled two of the schools. Right? So you're looking at eleven hundred fifty kids. It's certainly not a growing population. That doesn't mean it won't in some, at some point again. But at that point, at this point in time, there's certainly no need for capital, um, or impact fees to build buildings, let alone use them for budgetary items. So, I, I, I give them credit for thinking outside the box a little bit, maybe even asking the question cause you can't ever get them unless you ask the question. But in my opinion, it's a tax on folks, a right one, you know, rightful one, needful one. But if you don't use it in the way you wanted or planned to use it, you give it back. Cause that's, that's what it's there for. If you didn't plan correctly, it's no fault of the taxpayer. Not you all necessarily, but you know, if you all as a town, right? If we didn't plan properly and use them correctly, the law says you give them back. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Nope. Opposing public input? Continuing on the agenda, moving into old business, year-end funds?
Year-end funds. So, as we get closer and closer, I keep refining the projections that I have and wanting to figure out where we're likely gonna end the year. Uh, you know, the past couple of years, we had some unusual circumstances that left us, you know, some reasonable year-end funds that we were able to reallocate some other places. Um, I'm estimating right now that, um, our year-end funds are gonna look like they're gonna be around seventy thousand dollars.
How much?
Seventy thousand. Um, so, that said, um, you know, I don't usually rec-, I wouldn't recommend committing more than thirty thousand of that to something. Even that's kind of higher than my normal comfort level. You may recall past years trying to keep us in that eighty to a hundred thousand dollar range. So I'm already below the target I had recommended previously. Um, I did go through though and tried to find in what we had approved so far in the two thousand fourteen budget, what were a couple of those sort of one-off type equipment items that we could move, um, into using some of these funds? Traditionally, that's the kind of thing we've looked for, not using it for many recurring costs, but saying, look, here was an item that was a one-time purchase item. Um, you know, I, I guess the good news is, or the bad news, depending on where you sit, that most of our costs are the recurring costs. There weren't a lot of sort of discrete items that I could say, this is a unique thing to pull out. Uh, two that came to mind were, that were visible were in the police department, the replacement of the SOU rifle and the firearms replacement.
What about the, uh, the tasers?
Well, I did not include the tasers here, cause you'll recall that the tasers are a partial replacement.
It is, yeah.
It's a partial this year, partial next year. In fact, the budget committee recommended a smaller partial.
It's a third, third of three.
Right, exactly.
The feeling was that the third this year, we could do both, all of it next year cause of the, the weapon, other weapons would be out of the budget.
So, the thought that I had, when I looked at that, was that was set up to be a recurring cost so I didn't wanna wipe the entire thing out, that I'd sort of stay on the third of third. These other two items are one-and-done purchases. The, the SOU rifle and the firearms replacement. Whereas the, the tasers would remain in next year's proposed budget and then a portion would be in the following year's proposed budget.
When you called it SOU rifle?
SOU.
An SOU.
Well, it's a SWAT, SWAT rifle, they have.
Yeah.
Um, but the ta-, sorry, the taser's life expectancy is how many years?
We say seven?
I thought so. So, we're gonna, it's gonna be a cost this year and a cost next year and there's no cost going forward.
Mm-hmm.
Why not just pull it in? Cause I remember it was small, it was a small dollar. It wasn't a small dollar, but it was, you know, if the budget's there, let's take it out of the budget altogether and not worry about it for seven more years. And create a capital plan that actually includes it over going forward.
We could do that.
This is my thought.
Yeah, um...
I think, cause the budget committee agreed with doing it, just they wanted to lighten...
Right, and...
Impact, and we said, yeah, we could probably live with that, but if we can get it out of the way. Cause remember, the chief's, the chief's concern was unlike, or unlike devices and parts and stuff like that, and this would solve that issue. But it also means we need to get our lifecycle plan in place so we actually have a budget and... Someone's got to handle that.
So you say, uh, you saying to add that to the other three that are there?
Yeah. And maybe we can hold off that decision till we get a little closer than the budget, so, you know, closing out the budget and make sure we're not gonna get beyond your threshold of comfort, but...
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had anticipated a need of spending fourteen thousand, two fifty.
For?
For the taser replacement. We had parceled it out to seven thousand, one twenty-five. And, you know, the, the budget committee's recommendation was a further reduction on that, so...
I don't, I mean, fifteen thousand dollars, I don't see that being a big issue.
Okay.
That's my, it's one person's opinion. I, I just take it out this way, we don't have to worry about it for the next three years and we'll have time to get that lifecycle plan in place so that we have a, a fund to deal with this stuff going forward.
How old are those tasers?
Seven years. Some, seven, six, seven years.
At least, yeah.
They went lasting ten years?
No.
I think the issue is they can't get parts.
And, and, and what we have now, we can't get parts for them because they're no longer being made. So as they start, as they start failing, we're not able to fix them.
Well, and they cannibalizing other units.
Right.
You know, but they don't have, not, not every officer has one. There's some shared ones that'll go on, which is fine and...
And then ultimately, that was the reason that we thought, while it's always preferable to replace all of them, we could phase them, because we would have the new, we would retain a set of the old, but we'd have the ones that were replaced to cannibalize till we could catch up and get them all replaced. So...
Oh, well, the board has another...
How much is that, that the gov-, the state tells you we should have in our balance? Did they change that amount?
It's a, it, well, it's a, it's a, it's a percentage. And, you know, there's a couple ranges of percentage. We are, uh, we are a shade over the...
We're in the high side.
Yeah, we're in the high side. We have one point five million dollars in there.
We're, right, I mean, we're in the ballpark of where we, where we should be, with, with a little bit of extra in there.
We off the air again?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you know, there's a couple, there, unfortunately, there's two different benchmarks to use and, but we're, 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 we're okay.
Point being, is we don't need this to drop into the general fund because we have plenty of funds there.
Right.
And we can offset the next year's taxes, you know, more, so...
Yeah, I mean, and, and...
Things we know we have to have.
My issue...
This is not a want, this is a need and we just, we're trying to break it out.
Yeah, I mean, my issue on this is less about dropping a certain amount to the fund balance and more about making sure that we're okay with any of the unexpected's that turn up in January. We cannot overspend that bottom line. And so...
You jump in January, you think, you're talking about expenses that happened in December.
Yeah, yeah, accrued expenses where the bills come up. I think I have most of them and I've gotten pretty good at ferreting out what's coming or what's likely to come.
Department heads better be, need to be on, I think they all are, so...
Right, I mean, you know, I think I have pretty reliable numbers. That said, I also don't like sitting here committing and then, you know, not having the escape clause. Because remember, one of the very few things all of you can be removed from office for is overspending that bottom line.
And we never have.
So...
Never have.
So I always get, I, I have a high degree of paranoia about not cutting it too close there.
So, this is a question, if we encumber it...
We can do subject to available balance, you footnoted.
Right, I mean, but if we encumber, all of a sudden, come December, you know, come January thirtieth, we realize we, we can't spend the dollars, then we just...
You don't spend the dollars.
We deal with profit at this point.
I, I would recommend that we defer any approval of any purchases to encumber it, until the, at least the thirtieth meeting. That we encumber it at the thirtieth meeting and that we hold it pending closure of the books, which happens in February?
End of January.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, I, I think that's, that's fine, but what I wanted to do is I wanted to kind of give you what I was seeing is what could potentially come out of the budget, because then that kind of feeds into our next...
Quite honestly, in my experience, seventy thousand dollars is cutting it very slim.
It is.
And I, very close. And I've seen bills come in in January after all said and done, where it's like, we never knew we were getting this type thing.
Yeah, and now...
February, I've seen them in February.
I, I have a, yeah...
The other question I have is what else are they buying besides the SOU, SOU rifle under that line item?
The, probably the sight, the gun, it's all, it's, it's the whole fit out, I believe.
Yeah, it's the whole, it's the whole setup of the...
Because you can pick up a rifle, a Carby AR-15 for about twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, I think it's the sights, it's, it's the shoulder rest, the car, the extra cartridges, it's all, it's the whole fiddle class.
So it's Cadillac?
No, well, I don't think, do you call that a gun a Cadillac? I don't know.
My guess is it's a sight.
Yeah, my guess is...
Because the sight, the sight to get us, to get an optical sight is...
It's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be a complete unit.
Right.
If I remember, I remember seeing the, the quote at one point in time in the budget process.
Well, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, and I apologize, I, you know, we talked about this last in September, so I...
Yeah, and this was the amount that was approved by the budget committee, so... It's, everything here has already been approved by the budget committee. We're just, I just wanna pull it out. And, and Frank, this is a joke. Back, I think back last year, we, we made a bet on the, what we're gonna have at the end of the year. I'm still looking for that, looking for that doc, that, that video because you were, you were claiming we're gonna be well over a hundred thousand. I give my bet. That's all I gotta say. I gotta find the exact dollar mode, but you made a bet.
Make a phone call tomorrow and say, stop spending your wind.
So, anyway. Now, I think, it just, it show, you know, this amount of funds remaining, at least from a projection perspective, just shows that we did a real good job managing the budget. You know, we're down to the, you know, it was a default budget, so we didn't have a whole lot.
Right.
There wasn't, there were things in there we needed to do. We, we were able to run the town effectively anyway at this point. There are things we couldn't get done, but deal with that as we go forward.
Um, the one other thing that I flagged on my list here, sort of the small number, is half of the code red renewal. Again, we did that last year, so, you know, we're just gradually easing our way in. If you're looking for something to throw overboard, that's it. But I, you know, I was kind of grasping at straws at some point there. Um, so, these are the types of things that I saw related to the proposed fourteen budget. Um, and one of the other things I wanna mention, is one of the reasons we meet on the thirtieth, is in addition to those things that are coming out of, uh, next year's budget, there are things that we just honestly haven't finished yet this year, which is kind of the second bucket of encumbrances. Um, those, um, are the second set of things that you'll be, um, reviewing before year end. Most, they're not new directions, they're things that are already there. Um, I have built into my projections of that seventy, the con-, you know, with the department heads, sort of knowing what they have committed and that they may not get to those. So I don't want you to think that there's, that's why there's kind of two different baskets of, of funds there. So, I mean, that, then that part's operational.
You're saying that the number could be even higher?
I'm saying, I, I'm saying that, that the, yeah, I, if, if we choose, if, if, if we ignore everything that departments have not done but planned to do, yeah, the number would be high. But, you know, the numbers I've given you every year have not, not included those kinds of things.
Take my dollar now.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't remember that. I don't know.
Okay, so, um...
We'll see what it really is.
Here's, here's the other wild card that I wanna throw out, and this is as good a place as any to do it, because, you know, one of the other things we punted on back in September was we had talked about, um, replacing the fire department explorer vehicle. Um, and there was conversations about buying outright, but, um, adding into a lease, any number of things. Um, you recall, the chief explained the vehicle need was really to be able to carry four people with gear to training. He, there was a preferred side benefit of being able to haul equipment and other materials. And so he had been thinking along the lines of an extended cab pickup truck. Uh, you know, we've looked at the moment, and obviously, you know, it changes daily, you know, nothing, nothing overly exciting has been, you know, out there on the used mark. You know, we've looked at the moment, and obviously, you know, it changes daily, you know, nothing, nothing overly exciting has been, you know, out there on the used market. And obviously, no cash in hand, that, you know, we don't pursue that, that aggressively. New pricing seems higher than makes sense for basically utility vehicle. You know, we were both kind of hard pressed arguing putting that kind of money at a department utility vehicle to buy completely new. We've kicked around the, some of the ideas about a smaller SUV or the equivalent of the PD crossover vehicle. Sense that I sort of want to think about here is if we take a bigger picture, look at the situation, it may make more sense to adjust some vehicles between departments rather than solve, solving the problem just in one department. And through the best answer I've been able to come up with is reassigning the building department's Explorer to the fire department, and acquiring a small pickup for the building department. Uh, my sense is this would be more effective use for the type of, more effective for the type of work building department does. It's fairly consistent for building departments to have small pickups.
Like a Ford Ranger?
Yeah, yeah, nothing, uh, nothing huge. You know, that way we also have a small pickup available for, you know, from time to time, wreck or somebody else may need to do it in off hours. We kind of talked about that. So, and that brings the cost down. We.
I thought the other, the other part of that request for the fire department was a truck, a pickup that can actually tow the trailer and those items.
We, we've, we've contemplated, right, I mean, we've contemplated that. On the other hand, that function alone, we were kind of hard pressed to say it's worth throwing another twenty grand at having that function.
Are you talking about the HOV trailer, the big one?
Yeah.
Need to spend some money for a truck to pull that.
Well, yeah.
Given the red, the truck they have now has difficulty.
I thought it was for a three-quarter ton pickup, they'd do it just fine, and, and so going back to the Explorer, it just seems to me to kind of box into another small vehicle. You're gonna fit four guys in it, not a lot of equipment.
It's gonna be tight, huh?
Yeah, I, I mean, my thought would be, is, I think, if, if the idea is we, we sequester twenty thousand dollars to fund whatever we decide to do as we figure it out, because your point is we have no money, we can't look at the used markets, we have no money to pounce on anything, right? A three-quarter ton pickup, a couple of years old, out of the highway department service or out of some other service, make them available to us if we have the funds. If it doesn't, we go with the plan, but I, I don't think the Explorer solves the problem that it originally came forward for.
It doesn't, but, but what we genuinely struggled with was coming in looking for, you know, a forty or fifty thousand dollar solution was more than we thought really made sense for the way that that vehicle's gonna be used.
If, if you're talking about transferring the Explorer from the building department to the fire department and using that, why not just use the command vehicle the fire department already has and spend no money?
Well, I think the problem is the command vehicle's fitted out in a certain way. There's no, there's no, you can't carry anything in it, because the back of that is a command piece of it. They certainly can carry some people in it, but.
Yeah, the backseat's open, but with that, there's, there's no room for additional care.
Stuff like that, so that's why they use the other Explorer, but.
That, that command vehicle has more space. It's got, basically, it's got the pullout stuff in there.
Yeah, but, but there's, there's the, there's the radio stack that's on top of that. It's, there's no room in that, at least from my perspective, there was no room back there. Not for air packs or small hoses or whatever else they're gonna be thinking about carrying, I mean, to me.
They're talking about sending people for training.
Right, so, so then your command vehicle is not available for incident command.
I think another thing we need to look at too is, you know, you go new to used, right? Do you, how often does that vehicle actually get used? You know, so a lot of it is, you know, maybe sitting there and not getting used, so, that's just something.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, again, that's what, what we were kind of struggling with, how do we deal with the price issue? Because if I was drawing on a blank sheet of paper and said, I'd like a vehicle that does all this for the department because I could have all these uses, then I want fifty grand. Practically, I'm down to, most times I'm shuttling a couple of people in their gear, the Explorer's fine, and a pickup swapping that out is a better answer there. It's not the perfect answer, but at half the price, it's probably the most cost-effective answer given the use.
So this is only to cover training?
No, I think.
No, that's the primary use of it.
Yeah, you know, like sometimes when we have calls, there's only limited vehicles there, so people can't get to the scene, so. It'd be a thing, they go there, they jump in the vehicle and go up to the scene type thing, but. Again, my only thing is, you know, how often is this vehicle gonna get used, right?
Well, that's why I'm raising the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How often do we have a real fire in this town? Twice a year, maybe?
This year, there's been quite a few.
There's been quite a few, unfortunately, this year.
I'm not gonna wood, because don't talk about it.
I mean, boy, we're gonna have more vehicles in these departments than we're gonna have people.
Oh, we could take one of the cruisers and give the cruiser to the.
Outrageous.
Well, as, you know, just to be, actually, that's not, in some way, it may not be. We have two, two of them coming offline next year.
Why not take one of those and put money into it, get it fixed up, and give it to Kevin, and then make the swap over?
That would be the other way. That would be my other suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a bad idea.
It's already white, take off the stickers, get it polished up, put the town seal on it.
Yeah, leave, leave the blue lights and everything on it. Gives Kevin some.
I mean, that's, that's an alternative right there. I mean, I, you have to put money into it, you know.
Yeah, but even if you put five, six thousand dollars into it for new brakes, you know, and everything else, you're still coming ahead of the game rather than spending twenty thousand.
You may get a couple of years out of it without too many more issues. And I, the question would be, would he take the, the existing detail car, one of the two detail cars becomes Kevin's car, the two other frontline cars would become the detail cars. Whatever the chief would want to do, that would be a way to work it. And I would probably say, you know, put aside ten grand to keep Kevin's car, fix it, and have it as a, as a, as a maintenance fund kind of deal. Though it might take on that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's certainly, that's certainly another, certainly another strategy to kind of stretch it further. It just, you know, it becomes kind of that question, it's the same question I've wrestled with all year on, on the aged police cruisers. At what point do we want to continue to throw?
Counting does a hundred thousand.
Right, well, that's, that's fine, but we're now talking, we're now talking about vehicles that are gonna be either a hundred and ten, or I assume the crude, the detailed vehicles are probably closer to one thirty, one forty.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, it is, do we throw money into one of those as opposed to, you know, have we now swung so far on the cost-saving approach that we may not be using our dollars the best way? Happy to look at it.
Do you know what the mileage is on the Explorer that Kevin drives?
It's relatively low, I want to say forty, fifty. It doesn't go, I mean, it runs around town and runs up to Concord occasionally, so. It's the perfect vehicle to swap over in terms of age and mileage and fire department.
So if Kevin's doing short mileage, why, you know, the idea of the cruiser coming over makes.
The biggest challenge with the cru, the biggest challenge with the cruisers is the disparate drivers, just the different drivers.
Mm-hmm.
Kevin is a consistent driver. I won't have any issue with it. And it's not uncommon to have those cars go into that kind of fleet model.
Yeah.
And I would, you know, look at whatever the best one of the ones coming out of the detail line would be the one we would.
What you want to pick is the one with the best body, and then, the other stuff, consider it as replaceable or repairable or whatever.
Well, we have complete maintenance history on all those vehicles. We know what they, what they've been through, but that's run out a lot, and we use that. And then we deal with it then next year if it becomes a problem. That's why I said, you know.
Sure, sure.
Would it take, if you took ten thousand instead of twenty thousand, ten thousand dollars, put it aside, that's totally the fun whatever we have to do to that car.
Mm-hmm.
You know, clean it up, put a new front seat in it, it's just gonna need seats.
Couple cans of spray paint.
You know, put, put the rear seat back into it, because there's no rear seat back there. Although it may not really matter for Kevin. He can throw stuff back there.
Actually, probably, if, in terms of if you're moving to a sedan, having no, no seat in the back is probably preferable, because the, the storage benefit.
I don't know what he stores in it anyway. He doesn't store much in this.
Yeah, all right. We'll take a look and see. The only other thing that I would say is that the, the one wrench that, that does throw in my plan was, and it is I've been trying to find a way somehow to aggregate enough new equipment acquisition to be able to trigger bank financing for the next two cruisers.
Want the two already?
No, because they're only, they're gonna be under, you know, the, the bank is preferring.
Because we, we had already got the, the other external equipment for that.
Right, right, exactly, so.
Okay, well, it's across the first.
So, but, you know, as we think about numbers, that's another thing to throw into the mix, is that.
I mean, I'm not gonna spend more money to.
No, no, I'm not gonna spend more money, but you, you know, but to, to understand sort of the implication is you'll probably go from like three and a half percent to six and a half, seven percent.
The, the other thing you haven't considered, which is another monkey wrench into the, the gears of, you're contorted.
Mm-hmm.
Is the fact that if you give one of those to Kevin, that eliminates the trade-in that the chief usually uses to purchase another vehicle, which isn't a big money, but it is some.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, it's, it's another thousand or two. That's not gonna make up, unfortunately, that's not gonna make up a lot of ground for me.
No, I wasn't saying.
But you are correct, that it, it, it plays, it, it does play into the calculation too. All right.
All right. All right, so we'll do, we'll deal with the year-end funds on the thirtieth meeting. You'll keep a running tab. What else we will do for the thirtieth, so we'll, we'll talk about it again, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, and, and you, and I will start developing that, the, the list like you've seen previous years for encumbrances. And, and you'll see, sort of, I'll, I'll lay it out as I've done previous years. We have some things to carry over from prior, from this current year that are stragglers from that encumbrance list. We'll have some of these projects. I will start filling in as well the department items I know we'll need to get to.
All right, moving on, two thousand fourteen budget revisions. So this is the exercise of re-leveling, and after tonight, if we vote all these in, we need to reopen the budgets at the budget committee tomorrow night. Are you gonna be available to come tomorrow night? You don't need to, actually.
If you need me, I probably can. I mean, let's, when we get through, I mean, most of these are fairly plain vanilla, so. I mean, you may actually want to give them to them tomorrow if they don't have time to digest them.
They're on the agenda for tomorrow, so I was gonna ask you, tomorrow morning, can you PDF the ones that changed? Get it assembled, and I'll send them, we'll talk through it. They won't vote on it tomorrow night.
Right.
Well, they may, because a lot of them are going down, so who knows? Yeah, a lot of them are going down, which is good.
All right.
So you want to walk us through the couple, the ones we want to talk, talk about?
Yeah, um, you're gonna see, there's a bunch of them that have changes mainly because of the health insurance impact.
Tab or something that you're.
If you go to the two thousand fourteen, if you go to the two thousand fourteen budget spreadsheet.
That's where I am.
Okay, um, and I've marked them up in every department. So, they are flagged in, uh, and you should have, there is a hard copy in your pile of paper, Pat.
Yeah.
There is a column on all of these that says two thousand fourteen revised budget. And if you're looking at it on a computer, you will find that the changes are in yellow, and the notes are at the bottom of what was updated. So if you're at the executive, uh, new bottom line of a hundred and eight thousand two hundred and four dollars. Uh, and that reflects the changes to health insurance and dental insurance.
Okay.
So in other words, we've got the price from the.
Right, we have there not to exceed price.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we forward to the budget committee, the new bottom line of one hundred and eight thousand two hundred and four dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mrs. Jewitt. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Staying. Motion carries four zero zero. Town meeting.
Town meeting budget, uh, new bottom line, eight thousand five thirty-three. The two changes here are, um, actual bills in hand for the op tech programming support and the equipment maintenance contract for that voting machine. Because that work, of course, is done in December.
So.
What's that price again?
Bottom line is eight thousand five hundred thirty-three.
Yeah.
Jason, one question.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make, make a motion. Motion that we approve and forward to the budget committee, the new bottom line of eight thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars for town meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Jewitt. Discussion. Jason, this question, so this is, this has gone up, but your calculations has gone down, so I'm confused. Oh, I still do the, the default calculation, isn't it?
What?
The default calculation on the side, then minus nine.
Oh, oh, the, the, the calculation is the budget committee change. It's not my new change.
Oh, okay, so.
So, yeah, ignore the, ignore your far-right column. I didn't reprogram all of those.
All right, so motion made and seconded, discussion, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Staying. Motion carries four zero zero. Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Looks like we've made adjustments in health insurance and postage.
Uh, health, dental, and postage.
Would, normally what we've done is roll this up onto one sheet, and then we approve the whole sheet at once, for health and dental and everything else. That's a lot quicker than going through each. Do we have that?
No.
No, we chose to do it this way only because we had so many changes.
Well, and, and I know we've done it that way in the past. The problem is, last year, I took me like three cycles of getting it, the budget committee to like that approach. This, I figured I can show you all on one sheet, so.
And we can go vote, using the summary, you can vote the changes, because there, all the summary changes are there. It's just that we don't have any information what it is. So you know the new bottom line, and we can go do it that way if you want to do. That's, that's really is that one sheet.
Yeah, well, there, there's a couple, there's a couple you should, you should talk about, so.
That's what I figured, so, anyway. I make a motion, we approve the bottom line of, for forty-one forty dot ten town clerk of ninety-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Eighteen seconded, discussion.
What went up in that one? Health insurance?
Health, dental, and postage.
Well, this is going up again.
Well, and, and, and this one is also impacted. We told you when we did the budgets before, the company that prints our notices left the market. It's gonna cost us more to send vehicle reminders out.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying. Motion carries four zero zero. Accounting. Make a motion, we approve to the budget committee, afford to the budget committee, the bottom line for forty-one fifty dot ten accounting, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Wow, what a jump.
It's only five hundred dollars over what you approved.
Other than health and dental, what are the changes, Jason? You got?
Uh, actual invoice cost for, uh, the finance software.
Two thousand and eight.
We've reduced, um, uh, printing, we're using a lower-cost tax form option. Uh, we've, uh, reduced postage slightly, uh, and we reduced, uh, the seminars line, using more free prime X and webinar, seminars from LGC.
How come you got, uh, your postage down on this one, but up on the other one?
Uh, my postage is down on this one because this one is actually just stamps. What goes in the postage on the town clerk's budget is printing. Printing and postage for those renewals. The way the formula works for the vehicle renewals, it's gonna cost us more some months to send them out, because we're, we're below a threshold. So it's not just all stamps, but that's what gets thrown in there.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Staying. Motion carries forty-one fifty dot twenty information technology. I make a motion, we approve the new bottom line of sixty-one thousand one hundred and four dollars.
Wow.
Move it to the budget committee, and there's a reason why it went that way. Let's explain in a second.
Why a big jump?
We'll tell you in a second.
Yep.
Need a second? Do I have a second?
Too much. Why is it a big jump?
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion made and seconded by Mr. Byron. The biggest, the biggest changes, we consolidated all the phone costs into the IT budget. So all the costs that were in all the other budgets have been moved out of them and put over here. And the reason why that was done is we've centralized, well, we've consolidated all of our contracts for Fairpoint and Comcast, so they're all coming out of one, one contract. The goal is to lower the overall cost, which is trending to be on the lower side, which is what we factored into here. And, um, includes the wireless costs and, includes the Verizon wireless costs, everything associated with wireless phones that we have in town. And all the phone lines in town are all captured in this thing. The only thing that's not in this is excluded, the only thing that's not in this line is the police department's dedicated T-ones for their radios, and I think the fire department.
So where will we see the decrease?
You will see them in the phone lines in police, fire, highway, all of the other places where there, there are itemized phone lines that way.
Yeah, we started putting together the budget, we had just finished the conversion and in the process of doing the conversion, and so we didn't really have a run rate yet, so.
So what's the total decrease in the other budgets compared to the add in this budget?
It ends up being about a, a, a neutral offset, as near as we can tell, right now.
I thought we were gonna say five.
We will over the next year, but the challenge was, is the past year, there's two factors that drives our telephone costs up. There's the access cost, which we've lowered almost all the access costs, but then there is the long-distance cost, and the long distances varies. We've got better long-distance rates, but we have no history to know how the month of the month's gonna vary. So we took a little bit of a reduction because we feel we'll save money, but in the first year, we're not sure where it's gonna trend. There are, there is one department that uses a lot of long distance, and that one department, that, those call volumes will vary big time. Depending who they're calling and what they're calling about, so. So we try to make it as net neutral as possible. So we try to make it as net neutral as possible. And in like, you know, I hear Pat.
Yeah, that's.
Just remember, but to the bottom line, we, we've evened out, right? All we did was consolidate the billing, because if we didn't do that, well, we consolidated all the lines, otherwise I'd be, I'd be writing, you know, pulling out of every account one at a time, it's just to deal with accounting. So it's not a net increase overall, the overall budget, it's just to streamline the process. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0. All right, tax, 4150.40, tax collection.
Health, dental, and actual invoice of software.
So I'll move the bottom line of $92,664 to the Budget Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries, carries 4-0-0. And just for the public's reference, the Budget Committee is expecting all these adjustments, they were told in the preset of our start. This is the same adjustments we make every year, we just, I would say the difference maybe is our approach this year, but. 4152.10, assessing, a new bottom line of $49,703 to the Budget Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move the bottom line to the Budget Committee, do I have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0. Uh, legal expenses, uh, 4153 for a new bottom line of $20,400 to the Budget Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
And that, we, we went down on that one.
Why did we go down?
Uh, based on what our actual spend has been, um, we're not spending nearly the same rate we used to. Um, and you'll see my note there, I revised to, uh, eight hours a month for 10 months and 20 hours a month for two months. Which is basically sort of the intensity of the town meeting timeframe. Uh, you know, we've been, um, you know, we've been between five and eight hours many months of the year.
So can you use, say, January, February, March, you use a lot, but you don't use much in April, May, and June? Can you use account for some of those in April, May, and June that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean.
Comes out of that one bottom line.
Right, that's why I bucketed that way, in the old days, you used to have, you used to have a retainer, you bought 20 some hours whether you used them or not.
Yeah.
We're on a flat hourly rate.
Yeah.
And so sort of in my mind, I said you have two intense months and then, uh, 10 more gradual months, so. I budget that way, you don't pay it that way, you pay it just for what you use.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0. 4155 personnel, this is where all the changes really are, all the health changes are in here.
All sorts of things happening here.
Now, this one hasn't even been approved by the Budget Committee yet, so.
Okay, yeah, because there are a bunch of moving targets here, um.
Should we do it?
Yes.
Yeah, we have to prove it to move it to.
Yeah, because my numbers are.
No accurate.
As good as they get based on everything else that's in here, so, um, the return of surplus from health trust is included. Um, we, uh, have, we, uh, the, our short-term disability, uh, we now have a few months under the plan. We change plans, uh, midsummer, so I have a better, more accurate rate there. Uh, we've recalculated social security, Medicare, retirement, uh, all of the retirements based on sort of the wage levels that we've come up with through the rest of this, so those places where we changed hours, added overtime, cut part-time, all of those, those all get fed into another sheet that kicks out all of the relevant numbers, so those have all been updated to reflect that. Uh, unemployment tax reflects, uh, bills we, uh, billing information we receive from Primex, workers' comp. Uh, same thing along with an, uh, the expectation there is, I don't have anything in hand on the premium holiday, but I've been given a ballpark to use, so net result is a bottom line of $470,302. Which actually, in this case, represents a decrease from what you had proposed last time.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we approve and move forward to, move to the Budget Committee for $470,302. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0. Planning board, 4191.10.
Health and dental.
I'll make a motion that we move to the Budget Committee for approval, $54,701. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Jewitt, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0. Uh, zoning board shouldn't have, oh, I guess it does have one, okay.
That was discussed last time. I don't understand why this is a change.
They revised?
Yeah. Because the, the zoning board had said that they were going to do pretty much the same thing the planning board had agreed to do.
Well, the planning board approved $722, so we're now lowering it to 666. So we have to vote on the 666.
What I'm saying is that, it's my understanding that that 16 was there before. That's why I'm saying, I don't understand why this is a change that's being presented.
Um, we had talked about the 16, my sheet still showed the 72.
The, when we went and voted, it was still 72.
Yeah, uh, we, we probably voted on it on the 72, so.
I make a motion, we approve and forward to the Budget Committee, the change, the bottom line budget of 4191.30, $666. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0. All right, general buildings.
All right, a couple, big, again, reshuffling here, so let me tell you about that.
Well, the fuel got consolidated.
Uh, a couple things, one, there was a suggestion, um, that we take, um, some of the places where we had thought about using the prison community service program and making one bucket under general government for the weeks. Remember, we pay a thousand dollars a week, we often kind of split them up, we had some in cemeteries, anticipated some in highway and fire, so. I picked four weeks of service here.
That's an increase over what we've ever done. We've never had four weeks worth of.
Never.
Um.
One week, two weeks the most.
We've done two, we've done two this year, um, I think we've done three.
You've already, but you've taken money out of what we were ahead of lines and consolidated it, it's not, it's not 4,000 new, it's.
Yeah, I, I tried to pull, I tried to pull some of those out, so, you know, my plan going in is four weeks, and that's fire, highway, park, rec, where, wherever it is. We can, if you want to say, we're only going to use two weeks, we'll figure that out. You want to do three weeks, the idea was to try to aggregate them in one place.
But we're using more hours for recreation, help, more hours for, um, highway department. We're using more hours for them all, so why are we using, adding two more hours there?
Because we took it out of those departments.
I don't mean hours, two more weeks.
We, we took them out of those other departments and put it all in one place.
I don't think that the recreation department ever had a book for use of prisoners.
We've, we've used them on the behalf of Derek, right?
Right, right, and, and we've.
We did it.
I understand they did that, but that was a new application of this whole program.
Yeah.
And it was not something that had ever been done before. And there was no intention, that I've ever recollected in any of budget discussions, that recreation would use the prisoner program to do any work in their facilities.
Make a motion to change it, then.
We never used all these different ones.
I'll make a motion that we change it to, uh, oh, well, I'll start with $2,000.
Okay, a motion to modify line 396 from 4,000 to 2,000, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, made by Mr. Byron, seconded by Mrs. Jewitt, discussion?
My only question is, is, uh, what has, I know I've seen some of the stuff, but are they truly a benefit when they come in town?
Yeah, 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 I mean, we get, we get a good amount of value when you have eight or 10 people that are working a week straight.
I mean, two weeks ago, or two years ago, they painted this whole building.
Yeah.
But we have volunteers that work week after week, after, all year long, different times. I know people that, if I see a bag of trash, and I did the other day, I stopped and picked it up, I don't know who dropped it, or they put it beside your dog poop thing down there, and I mean, people picking up all the time.
We, we're not using them for that, we're using them for, we had in the past, I understand that, but we've been using them for brush clearing, we use them for repairs on talent hall this year, um, you know, we have some additional exterior painting to do. We have potentially interior painting, and part of the other reason of putting it here is that if it's a beautiful week and I can get five days outside, we'll do outside work. If it rains every day, we have inside projects, so we, we kind, we kind of split, split where those opportunities go. For us, it's eight to 10 sets of hands for a week, um, that we can throw at a project.
This year, just the one week?
We've used two weeks this year.
Two weeks, yeah.
And now it's towards the end of the year.
Right.
So you don't believe we can find more work for two more weeks throughout the whole year?
It's not what I said.
I think you can, of course you can always do it, you can always find more, but.
But because it's, well, there's work to be done, that's, that's the, that's the, well, fortunate and unfortunate part.
You seem to think we get a real good bargain getting those people. You don't get a real good bargain, when you think of what all the volunteers in this town do.
We can't rely on volunteers to be available to go paint a building. We can't rely on volunteers to come into the town hall and paint the inside of the building. Yeah, we can rely on them going around cleaning up trash and do all the smaller projects, but these are, these are significant projects to get done. I'm not undermined, I'm not, we're not dismissing the volunteers, I'm a volunteer, you know, so we're not doing that, but we have other things that can't get done by volunteers.
I've got another question for you, is there any projects that Kevin has in line that he sees in the future that, where he could use this service?
Uh, we have some exterior painting at the fire department, we have interior painting at talent hall, uh, Jack has additional brush clearing that needs to happen.
What about all these people that can?
Yeah, but that's not necessarily a full of the program.
Cemetery, cemetery spring, uh, cleanup.
We hire, like Zach, the kid that works at the incinerator, works for Jack, and he's out picking up trash and stuff like that.
But he's mowing, he's mowing, elevating up trash, that's not, that's not what we're talking about with the brush clearing and all that.
Yeah.
All right, um, all those in favor for the reduction to $2,000, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0, right?
Yeah.
4-0-0. All right, for the new bottom line of, uh, 105,800, no, right?
107,089.
Oh, okay, I guess I saw it, I didn't see it, I saw that thought.
Well, let me.
The new bottom line is 107,890.
Let me talk about the other major change that came in here. Um, the gasoline line, uh, aggregating our gasoline use at that gas station from all of the different departments where we charge it out separately, um, so covering police, fire, building, and highway, and putting it all into general government. We operate one gas facility, we get one bill, we go through the artificial exercise, and you will, as you see every now and again when you look through accounts payable, of trying to reconcile to the gallon everybody and charging it out on a certain interval when a bill comes in and Andrea waits and says, oh, okay, well, you know, Jack is 300.5 gallons, so we'll hit the highway department with that. Uh, what we're trying to do is eliminate that sort of back office excessive calculation. We know what our volumes are, we have logs, we will continue to check the, check the logs and make sure our general assumptions are correct, um, and monitor, and monitor that use, but the, the division from one facility and one bill across all these departments is a time-consuming exercise, and I'm not sure that we get a huge gain out of that knowledge.
But I think it's a good idea. I'll tell you why, I know of another town who did the same thing, and they bolted all together, and then they found out. And the same thing with using paper, no town, like ours doesn't, you know, account for how many reams of paper the planning board uses, the zoning board, and then they found out overall, they used a quarter again, more than they had used before.
Well, we still, we'll be logging it, the difference for us is the artificial division of bills out.
Yeah, you, you're going to be able to still backtrack this number for all the departments.
We're still going to log by department, I mean, I can look and see, you know, this year what we've used by department, and can look and see where there's been a deviation, going to see who continues to use it. I'm not saying we're just going to blindly pay the bill and not log what's happening down there. What I'm saying is, what I'm trying to get out of is the monthly exercise, or every, you know, bimonthly exercise of trying to parcel out and reallocate all of these bills, and we assign it based on, hey, here's the bill I have on my desk today, right? Now, so if it happens that the price of gas that day is 325, that's what I hit the other department for their 300 gallons. Now, their 300 gallons may have been anywhere from 305 to 375 a gallon.
So you're going to still track the school, though?
Yeah, and I'm going to track the school separately, and I do have that.
Know exactly how many gallons every.
Because we do bill them, and that was one of the things that, you know, I had flagged, we looked at this before, and you'll see the second line of that note there, is the billing to the school, we do gross appropriate that. Um, and this was sort of our first full year of having that under our belts. But, yeah, so I reduced them, yeah, we, it is, they offset. The reality is, we budgeted 3,400, the reality is that that's not the volume they're using, so I adjusted that down based on our actual experience to 2,200.
Now, what does, how, how do you actually track that, is it just, they go, they write things down, and this is what we use?
Yeah, they're supposed to, they, there's a log where they put the starting gas, you know, with the dollars, whatever, what's in the tank and how many gallons they put into it, so, and who they are.
So do we ever verify those numbers with, with the delivery numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're doing now down to allocate out every bill, I mean, we're trying to assign every single gallon.
The only problem, Kevin, is temperature, seriously, because the temperature changes the volume that you pump and everything.
Yeah.
And so what they put back in the tank may vary by, I think it's like a five or two, five gallons or 10 gallons.
Yeah, it's not 100%.
It's like when you tap off your car, it doesn't, it's on me, but it still takes less, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I just wasn't sure how they, how they tracked.
Yeah.
And then, uh, Jason, the fixture purchase, that was, that moved that line, moved out of the IT.
That moved out of the IT, that was a straggler from when that used to be.
Government buildings.
Right, right, whatever it was the year before IT, so. Um, I can say, though, the 16,000 gallons is a good number for us cumulatively. Um, the price, just in case, you know, everybody always wonders where, what the price is, I'm budgeting at 339 a gallon.
Well, that's high. It might be higher, but it's a lot lower too many times.
I've hoped, you know, if you look over the course of the year, now, this is, what, I, I decided to stop guessing. What I use is the U.S. Energy Information Administration number. They publish what their expected rate for the coming year is going to be, um.
Put the DAXs in it, though?
Why don't you just use futures?
Because the Energy Information Administration is a department of the federal government that makes a nice.
Suggestion.
A nice analyzed report, uh, their number for the past year was pretty decent in terms of tracking, so, um, it's a, you know, it is the best proxy that I've found to use.
And their suggestion is what?
339.
Wow, somebody's going to make a good bid in between, because now it's 321. I realize that it varies, and it could go up to.
The gas station's at.
Yeah, I'm getting a.
I'll go there tonight.
Yeah, so, I mean, our, our rate's probably a little low, but.
On Elm Street.
Elm Street, I just paid, I went over there, I think I paid three.
336 today.
I was going to say, yeah.
336?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, rip off.
I, I don't use gas anymore.
I'll make a motion to move the bottom line of 107,800, uh, 107,890 for, for 4194.10, general government buildings to the Budget Committee for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Staying, motion carries 4-0-0, you can note her reluctance to approve. Abstained. Motion carries four zero zero. You can note her reluctance to approve it.
I know. I can't believe...
4195 cemeteries. 4195 cemeteries, new bottom line of 8,000...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, you're gonna put something in there?
No, I'm taking stuff out because I realized I made a mistake. Okay?
I'm shocked. So, new bottom line of eight, three oh, 8,308 dollars. So, I'll make a motion that we move to the budget committee, that bottom line, 8,308 dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
And just for clarity, this represents a reduction. Actually, I think in other ways...
It actually represents accepting a reduction the budget committee made.
I'll also suggest that it's much cheaper than what I saw last year's budget committee at.
Well, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a thousand, almost a thousand.
Well, I, I think it was, they were at one point at 25,000.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, further discussion? We did make a motion, right?
Yeah.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries four zero zero. Other insurance, 4196.90 town insurance for a new bottom line, 59,028 dollars. I'll move to the budget committee. Do I have a second? All right, Mrs. Stewart? Yep, Mrs. Stewart seconded. Discussion? This represents the actual dol, the actual bill and...
This represents the actual bill and the fact that we had the one-time return of surplus in 2013 that we're probably not gonna see in 2014.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries four zero zero.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Yep.
And this may be slightly, how often have we used liability insurance?
Aren't we required to carry?
I could've used a couple of weeks ago.
Um, actual claims this year, probably one or two.
For what dollar amount?
Uh, probably pretty small dollars.
Below the deductible, I guess.
Well, uh, yeah, or in the ballpark of the deductible, because our, I mean, our deductible spend is about 1,500, so obviously some part of that has been below the deductible. Um, and, you know, we have, uh, you know, um, we, what we end up using much more is the proof that we have insurance.
Oh, 'cause you're required, there's a lot of...
We, we, we produce those certificates many different places. Um...
So, there's not an option to self-insure?
There's, there's...
No, there isn't.
No, I, but if we, we can't, we can't prove...
You say you're self-insured.
So, what's the, what's the umbrella, what's the policy rated at? Is it a million, 10 million? What's, what's our coverage on the liability?
Uh, I, I, I'm not gonna speculate off the top of my head and misquote you, so, I mean, I have to look it up and see.
I'm just interested in...
Yeah.
Expenditure versus return, I'll call it.
Yeah, I mean, in, in an, I mean, it's, in an off-year, it's not, you know, it's small. I mean, that's, uh, that's one. The entirety of that is the replacement cost of, you know, your police cruiser.
Yeah, but if the town were to set up a, right now, you're getting, you're spending 57,000, call it 60,000 for the sake of discussion, set up a...
A fund.
A fund of, say, 150,000 and call itself self-insured.
Well, isn't this where, I'm just thinking, I, when I think of liability, I'm thinking millions of dollars.
It is. Well, I mean, that's the other piece that...
Can we cover 150,000 dollars?
You never hope you have that point, but that is also the other coverage you have of, God forbid, you are paying a liability settlement.
Okay, but if you're paying a liability settlement, they're gonna sue the town for millions of dollars, some of that may come out of an insurance policy, okay? But...
Yeah, that's interesting.
I don't think you can be without liability. We, we have our incinerator and all the people using that, and all the recreation facilities, and, boy, all those kids that play in and all these things and all, all the...
Then, there's also the government exemptions in terms of suits.
And there are the legal fees to prove that you still have the exemption from that, and the various settlements that come down the pike in order to...
You know, it's, it's an interesting thought, right, but the question, you know, as you said, we'd have to put some money in a fund, so we'd have to raise three times this in one year to put it in a fund somewhere. No, it's, you know, it's standing to do, it's doing.
It's an interesting exercise to look at, um...
And you said you wanted to do that, right? That's what you told me.
Well, I was, I was just gonna suggest...
I don't recall saying that, but I would note that our renewal was in July, so if we wish to explore this concept and the implications of it...
I, I think, you know, to Frank's point, it's probably an interesting point to look at. What are the ramifications for doing it? And, you know, would we save money, and how do we protect ourselves for some, some major catastrophe, right? You know, is there a policy that says, we'll cover you for anything over 250,000 dollars, but anything under, you, you deal with, and that policy's a smaller amount of dollars?
So, you get a larger deduction.
Yeah, yeah.
And cost.
So, I mean, that's, that's the other thing. Right now, we have, I think it's a thousand dollar deductibles in liability. Maybe we...
I think we're up to five.
Is it five?
No.
Is it a thousand?
Um...
I always keep remembering a thousand.
It's a thousand. There's no variability. That's the package, that's the package that's offered.
So, the question is, what packages can we get, whether it's through them or somebody else, that makes a deductible, say, 25,000 dollars, and we cover everything under 25,000? Does that lower that yearly premium down?
I mean, these are all, I mean, we can look at...
It should, yeah.
We can, I mean, we can look at those, but, you know, with the whole notion of why do the pool, insurance pools exist in the first place? And they exist in the first place for property liability, because municipalities were considered high-risk, high exposure. You don't have lots of people clamoring to provide liability insurance for police and fire departments, for instance. That was part of the reason when these pools started was municipalities had to work together because the private market didn't offer.
Yeah, but I would, I would assume, if they don't have other plans, then maybe that's...
This is a one-size-fits-all, so you can do this.
The question is, ask them, I mean, you would think they would, you know, if we're willing to cover 25,000 dollars of exposure, why wouldn't they take it? They're still gonna get some money from us, but they don't have to worry about these little nitty-gritty things. So, I, I think it's worth an exercise to go look at, that's all.
So...
You know, no action for this, but as we get closer to the renewal, we should look at it. All right, uh...
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank, yeah, you see, uh, did I, was there, did I make the mo, was the motion made and seconded for this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries four zero zero. Uh, advertising. 4190, 4197.10, new bottom line of 13,644 dollars, which is a reduction from what was approved by the budget committee and the board.
How do you... No, it's an increase.
How, oh, I'm caught by the negative 10 again, sorry. Looked in the wrong line. I wasn't even looking at the column, so I'm looking at the column, I'm, I'm squared in and focused on the number. So, 13,644 dollars increased. Um, I make a motion that we send out to the budget committee.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Again, if you wanna drop it, you could drop 67.15 right out of that.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to reduce it by 6,715 dollars, thus eliminating the NHMA membership.
Motion's been made to...
Do we have something else in this place?
No, we don't. We had a lengthy, all right, there's a motion on the floor to reduce or zero out the NHMA membership from 67.15 to zero. Do I have a second?
Can I question it first?
No, I need a second.
Why can't I?
Because I need a second.
I'll second.
Second made by Mr. Bork. Discussion?
Why?
Why what?
Why are we dropping it?
Because Frank doesn't think we need it. We had a very lengthy discussion about the services they do offer. There is a value that we have. There's no, there's little, there's no other alternatives at this point. Yes, we don't know what NHMA's gonna turn itself into. I think we gotta give it a little bit of time and see what happens, and if it turns out something we don't want, we get rid of it next year. Um, but we do rely on a lot of their things, and...
Do we use that lawyer much? That would be under there.
No, and the discussion we had, we, I, I...
I felt that he got a lot of paperwork from him that he could refer to, to understand.
There's a lot of update bulletins that come out of there. There's the, there's the boards you participate in with all your peers. I mean, there's all the stuff that's part of that organization that we would not...
So, we can live without it, and we are not gonna stop.
No, we, we...
No, no, no. Our recommendation was not...
We met this motion once before, and we said we couldn't do it, and the board did not approve the reduction.
Right. We, we, we spent about 40 minutes on this about a month and a half ago about not wanting to leave and all of the reasons.
I was sleeping, probably.
You voted in favor of it.
Oh, really?
In favor of what?
I'm not in favor of law because I got my test built, so everybody's gonna...
I think, I think, I think, I don't remember who was here, but I believe Frank was the only negative one.
Really? You were negative, huh?
No, the only, no...
Kevin, I believe, also voted in favor of it a little bit.
I was with, I was with...
Okay, so I think there was a full board. It was, it was three, three, three...
Brent wasn't here at that meeting either.
Oh, it was a tie? It was a tie, it was a tie. But I, I would almost assume that, I know where...
I don't wanna get, the town get ripped off, that's all.
I, I know where Brent would vote.
I know where Brent would vote, too.
I guarantee you Brent would vote.
Mm-hmm. I, I could say that, too, but I think that's gonna skew the vote. All right, all those in favor of the reduction, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Reduction passes three, one, zero.
Let, let's, let's just, does Pat know exactly what she was just voting on?
Yeah, you...
Because we ran into the situation last time.
What you voted was for us to no longer participate in municipal association, to lose all of the training, lose all of the legal services.
Well, you don't lose the training, but you end up paying for it and other things, yeah.
We would be standing, okay, I mean, there are very few of us...
We magazine, but I think that we can't, you go to a lot of workshops up there. You should keep us informed, and he's there.
I don't go to a lot of workshops up there.
But he won't be able to because he's no longer a member.
Yeah.
If he would give us the information, we could get it free.
What are you talking about, me giving information?
The state, the representatives don't have the same information we get out of it. They have some of it, but there's all the things that go on.
They hear a lot more than you and I.
So, you're gonna rely on Frank, who's, who's on the board for another three months?
Yeah.
Who may not be on the board.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. All right, new bottom line, is he gonna zero that out, say the new bottom line, please? All right, for the new bottom line is now 6,929 dollars.
I noticed several towns recently have dropped that. I've been watching it in the paper.
My understanding is there's only...
There's only two or three in the state that are not members.
Right.
And one of them is contemplating coming back because...
Manchester, Portsmouth, and...
And Salem.
And Salem. And Salem is actually thinking about going back because they realize they threw the baby out with the bathwater when they left before.
Right, so our, our small community doesn't have the same kind of resources as the communities do, but... All right, new bottom line is 69, uh, 6,929 dollars with the reduction of the NHMA membership. All those in favor of the new bottom line, go into the budget committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, no. Against? Aye.
Aye.
And abstained. So, motion fails. Two, two.
What? I, I said aye.
I said aye.
Oh, you, so you were in favor of the reduction? I, I thought I heard, I thought, okay, you delayed, I'm sorry. So, it's, it passes three, one, zero. Okay, good enough.
I don't want Litchfield to be the oddball.
You are the oddball now.
Wait, wait, that's what we will be. This makes us the oddball.
Pat, Pat, you voted to remove us from, you voted to stop...
But you were all there, so we're still gonna go through.
No.
No.
No, Pat, you voted to remove us from the membership, so we will cancel our membership after this year. We will no longer be in the...
No, I didn't mean it that way. I'm sorry.
That's it. This is why I said, let's clarify it, but...
Don't look so discouraged.
I'm not. I'm just waiting for it to resolve itself, and then somebody tell me where we're going.
Okay, so in the last vote, you were in against.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, because I voted in favor of the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
To reconsider.
Okay, motion to reconsider. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to reconsider. Discussion? Or reconsider? So, we're gonna sit and re, we're gonna reconsider the, the reduction of the NHMA membership from, uh, 67.15 to zero. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of reducing and removing ourselves?
There's no motion on the table.
Oh, the reconsideration was there, so, at this point, do I have a motion? Okay. Hearing no motion. We're back to a bottom line of 13,644. Right? Am I doing it right? I've never, I've never heard the reconsideration part.
I'm really confused. Right now, the motion and the result of the motion was to reduce it by the 67...
Fifteen.
Fifty.
Correct.
Okay, so when I motioned to reconsider, what I'm saying is, we can now revoke this. If somebody wants to bring a motion, they can revoke the motion, okay?
Okay.
So, if somebody makes a motion to add it back in, they've made the motion to add it back in, and then they make a vote.
I'll make a motion, I will make a motion to add back in the membership fees for NHMA at 67.15. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? You're gonna have to.
I'm really not sure. I, I really, I can see advantages, but that's a lot of money.
Do I have a second?
I'll motion, I'll second it.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Now, Pat, if you vote in favor of this, what that means is that Litchfield will continue its membership in NHMA going forward.
I, I think we do need it. I really do, so I'm gonna vote yes, but I hate to see that amount of money, but, 'cause I don't think we use it as much as we should. Maybe we don't need it as much as we...
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Those abstaining. Motion, Pat, motion...
Fails.
Fails. So, now we're, we're boxed into a...
We're backed into the zero again. Okay?
Well, what, what's, Mr. Lemire?
Can, can I recommend that maybe, given the back and forth you've had here, that you table this one till you have a full board at your next meeting?
I agree. That's what I was gonna recommend.
I agree with that. That's fine.
I don't have a problem with it.
Do I have to have a motion to table it?
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table 4197.10 till we have a full board to discuss the values of the NHMA. Okay, moving on to 4210.10 police.
Okay, um, you have, um, contract with police chief in the first line. Uh, the special officers...
That's not a new contract.
No, that's, that's the terms of your existing contract, yes.
That's the, right, that's the increase.
Um, the sp, uh, part-time line, um, so I'm suggesting a further reduction there. Uh, we have, uh, fewer hours available to us amongst our current part-timers. So, uh, you know, we've talked about this before. I'd love to see more part-timers, but the prospect isn't there, so I don't wanna budget for the pie in the sky that somebody will fall into our lap.
It doesn't stop us from getting all the part-timers and eating up those hours.
No, no, we'll allocate accordingly, but...
Because I hope, the idea would be is additional part-time is to reduce the overtime line, so that there's funding and salary to deal with if we deal with it.
Right. Um, the 149, you'll notice that there is a blue-colored one, if you're playing along in the colored form here. Uh, this is an air, uh, this was the overtime training. This was an item for professional training progression. Uh, selectmen approved 9,000. Uh, the budget committee recommended reducing that to 4,000. So, I wanted to bring back and confirm, um, where you, where you wanted to be on that, if you wanted a change or not.
Just because the budget committee recommended for...
No, I just, I wanted...
They're, they're the ones generating the budget. Why do we have to change it?
I, I wanted to flag this, as opposed to some of the other budget committee changes, with the benefit of hindsight and a few months of our experience behind us, said, okay, I can agree with this. This one, you, you set the 9,000.
My personal feeling is that the number should stay the same unless we receive information that changes them, for example, the healthcare numbers. And things like that. And what we give to the budget committee is, goes on to the form MS, what is it, seven?
Right.
So, the point here is that they, we're reopening it, and we're putting the money back in there with the net effect of the bottom line, which is what the budget committee looked at anyway, at a lower rate anyway. The idea is they'll return, they'll, they'll go with our recommendation and negate it.
Or they'll go with their own recommendation and ignore, which is fine.
They could go back in there and ignore it down the road, which is, which is...
I, I just, I flagged, and there's one or two of these that I flagged where the budget committee made a change, where you were in a different spot, and I couldn't in good faith recommend following their lead. In some cases, you'll notice, I've already followed their lead, because I thought they had a valid point.
Can I ask a question with regards to the chief's, uh, contract increase?
Yep.
We didn't have it in our original pose. What was the trigger that makes it there now?
Uh, educational completion.
Okay.
Completion of degree.
I knew he was on the verge of almost being with...
Right, which... Right, which will be later this month, so.
I just wanna be able to explain what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that was the trigger you had built in there. Uh, uniform allowance, uh, reduced slightly based on, um.
Reduction of.
Reduction for, of part-timer, uh, health and dental, um, reflects the changes, and again, this, you know, this is where our largest concentration of employees are, so you see a big swing carrying from one, one year to the next, when plans change and people change, you know, you get somebody that goes from single to family, two-person to family, or something like that, that's a big jump, you see it here. Um. Why I suggested life insurance changed is beyond me, so let's pretend line two fifteen has not changed, because there's no change there. Um. Telephone and data, um, again, we pulled out the wireless, um, we discontinued pagers altogether, and the only thing remaining there is the dedicated line to dispatch, um, and.
That's, that's the, uh, the sheriff's office ability to use our.
It's also, well, it's also our remotes, yeah, it's our remote data lines, so from, from here to our remote sites to the north, and for the sheriff department bill can't do it too. And we're looking at options to reduce in that next year, but.
But it's.
It's, it's a huge project.
Yeah, we're, that's, um, short money relative to the cost of getting out of that, unfortunately. Um, office supplies, uh, reduce that, um, we had an assumption based on some more funds for records management, we acquired cabinets at a very low cost this year. Um, again, the vehicle fuel, we moved all of that.
That's, we're not going to hydrogen vehicles, right, which is free?
It, it, yeah, yeah, um.
That line went over to the.
Yeah, no, that, that all, that all moved over to general government that we looked at earlier. Uh, vehicle repairs and maintenance, again, this is another one where I'm flagging, um, a disagreement with the Budget Committee. You had proposed fourteen, the Budget Committee, uh, reduced that to twelve.
And the logic behind that was that, that we would eat any repairs for the vehicles being replaced next year.
Right.
They would be replaced sooner than later, and the reality of it is, they probably won't get replaced to June or July, based on approval and orders and fit up and all that, so we have six months, so.
Right. Um, equipment purchase, uh, we talked about the, earlier tonight, the removal of the SOU, the duty firearms. Based on that conversation, do you want me to drop the tasers out now, and we'll make a plan?
Well, I think if we're gonna have the budget, we haven't approved those anyway, I, I would leave them flagged, put them dollars back in there, just so they're there, because the Budget Committee's gonna wanna revoke the whole budget.
Then they're gonna have to go back and revoke them when you take them out again.
But they're gonna wanna revoke the whole budget.
Okay, well, that's why I'm saying, why, it, why, why are we just gonna take them out now and find a way to do it? Um, we know we can do the SOU, we know we can do the duty firearms, and we can do some portion of the tasers.
It's the Boyd's plan, I mean.
So if you wanna go that way, let's take them out, so we're not doubling back on this over and over again.
Yeah.
Why? Now you've, now what you've put yourself into is committing those funds, so if anything happens between now and the end of the year, you've now screwed yourself.
Yeah. Alternatively, I would rather go back and add them back in, and not double back, because it's a two-part process here, I, I think the, the likely path is that we will have the ability to pay for those.
Agree, I'm just worried that we get ourselves handcuffed into a situation where you take them out now, something blows up in the next couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
We've lost the seventy thousand dollars that you had suggested we may have, actually more like a hundred and some.
Nice, nice, yeah.
I'm gonna prove that, though.
But, uh, the long story short is, we end up in a situation where they're no longer in the budget for fourteen.
Yeah.
And we're screwed.
Put it back in there, just for the count, I expect, and when we approve it on the thirty-eighth, we'll go back, it's gonna be a small set of changes for the Budget Committee to re-approve anyway.
If those are the only line items, then so be it.
Yeah. Put it back.
Okay.
So we're voting on the real bottom line. Wrong call.
Hold on, I know what I'm doing.
So if you wanna change that call, please feel free.
Come on. Oh, that was helpful. You know something?
I had a real computer.
Yeah, well, if I wasn't trying to save the town money by buying these hundred-and-thirty-dollar laptops.
Who's brought idea was that?
Mine. With, although I think, I think it was Selectman Byron who pointed out the, uh, great deal on these to me. Okay, cruiser purchase, um, the change here reflects the actual lease per, uh, price for the two thousand thirteens. Uh, so, all in, all of those changes with the additions, changes we've made, new bottom line, one million three hundred and fifty-four thousand five thirteen.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we move to the Budget Committee for reapproval, one million three hundred and fifty-four doll, one million three hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries four, zero, zero. Police support forty-two ten dot fifty, the only real changes here are around insurance, so, um, the new bottom line for the insurance changes is one hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So I'll make a motion, we move that to the Budget Committee for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bork, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries four, zero, zero. Um. Forty-two fifteen dot ten, ambulance, there is a change in, looks like our estimate have finished, right, so we went from forty-four to forty, forty thousand, so new bottom line of fifty-one thousand five hundred, I'd like to move that to the Budget Committee for reapproval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries four, zero, zero. Forty-two twenty dot ten, fire, there's a few other things in here, let's see. No, it's all insurance, right?
Uh, no, let's see, fire inspector, uh, reduce that based on sort of the, on the Budget Committee's review, and this board had proposed starting to add some inspector services to the building department, so I think, given the ramp-up time, that is doable.
Are we on target for that? I know there were some courses that were out there, I know there was a conflict due to some.
There, there was a conflict, uh, we should be able to get into the next cycle of courses, so that would be at some, some point, first quarter of the year.
Okay.
Uh, overtime firefighter, um, Budget Committee reduced, um, I would say, based on where we're going, that's a reasonable number. Uh, health and dental, we've changed, um, again, lion's share of the, uh, telephone charges moved out. Um. Station repairs and maintenance, we had budgeted the thousand dollars there for, that was one of the places we planned on a, um, community service project, so, uh, we left the materials and put the thousand dollars over under general government. Uh, vehicle fuel, uh, we removed gasoline and actually fixed diesel based on what our use has been so far, or our expected use for the year, the two thousand two twenty, diesel, since that is at the station there, we didn't.
Stayed there.
It stays there, they handle that bill themselves, again, the three seventy-three a gallon comes from the same office of, uh, the U.S. Energy Information Administration.
You choose.
All right, so for a new bottom line of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand eighty-four dollars, I'd like to move that to the Budget Committee for reapproval, which does represent a reduction. Got it right this time, right?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain, motion carries four, zero, zero. No change to hydrants?
Does this include, Jason, I saw on the folder tonight, the cost for the, uh, seven percent increase?
Yeah, this, this is still based on that, uh, my assumption hasn't changed, because, remember, it's seven percent between now and July, it will be higher than that after July.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question, and the question is that, in terms of that seven percent, that's backdated to July of two thousand thirteen.
Right.
How are they making up the difference between what should have been collected versus what was collected?
That will be incorporated somehow into our initial bills of two thousand fourteen.
So are we considering that, I guess is where I'm coming from?
Yes, and that, that was, if you look at my notes back when we.
I'll read you notes.
I, apparently you don't, I thought this one, I tried to do this before, actually, when, when we budgeted this. Their final rate that they asked for is the twenty-four thousand nine forty-three twenty-six.
Twenty-four thousand nine hundred what?
Nine forty-three twenty-six, it should be right in the notes that are printed on that page, Pat. Um, the rate until that time is lower, um, and the.
Three thousand something.
Yeah, and their permanent rate increase is expected at fourteen and a half percent, so I'm using the theory, I budgeted their expected approved future rate, because, knowing that I'll have six months of that, thinking that if I budget twelve months of it, it'll, it'll cover the catch-up period.
When do they, the, the Heinz period, we call it in the trade, when do you anticipate that, uh, nobody else got that, of course, when do you anticipate?
Anticipation, I got it.
When do I anticipate the new rate?
Yeah.
Uh, sometime next summer.
July.
I'm expecting July.
They're gonna be in the same position, where they approve it at the end of the year, and we'll catch it in fifty?
Um, it depends, I mean, right now, they're expecting midsummer, I have no reason to think that they're not gonna be.
I'm just wondering if.
On that schedule.
They'll approve the whole thing as a package at some point shortly, and then.
They probably won't, because they sort of have all these other timetables, my sense is that this number should be in the right ballpark for next year. There is a possibility that if the timing goes awry, you may be un, you know, the best case in one way is you underspend this line next year, and you capture whatever savings you have, and you would need to encumber that to cover the trailing period the coming year. So I think we're okay with this.
Okay.
I tried to build that in.
Okay, so there was no change there, so forty-two, forty-one dot twenty, code enforcement, this represents insurance and reduction of fuel, I believe?
Fuel and moving out wireless.
So new bottom line is seventy-six thousand nine hundred, I'll make a motion to move that to the Budget Committee for reapproval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bork, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain, motion carries four, zero, zero. Emergency management, um.
Okay, this reflects, well, okay, the, the Budget Committee disagreed with the stipend and removed that. Um, we had proposed the emergency planning, um, I, to my embarrassment, uh, realized that we actually have money set aside for that, that.
We had covered it last year.
Yeah, right, and then we didn't pursue it, so we don't need to raise more money for that. Um, and the code red thing I mentioned earlier.
The half and half.
The half and half.
So for a new bottom line of nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars, I'll make a motion, we move that to the Budget Committee for reapproval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bork, discussion.
The half of the code red that you're talking about, is that the, um, other half to the half?
That's right, yeah, our.
So now what we're doing is, we're, we're committing that we're gonna spend that out of.
And we've been doing that since we got it, so.
Well, yeah, that, yes, unlike, okay, so if you follow the same logic you used on the police equipment, you should restore this to forty-six seventy-two. If you think that twenty-three hundred hours is a reasonable risk to take, you, but, by removing it, you are at least indirectly committing to encumber that money.
Pointing this out, so that everybody knows that we're committing this out of year-end fund.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four, zero, zero. Road agent, forty-three eleven dot ten, uh, reduction is telephone and insurance, no, gas, propane.
Uh, telephone, uh, just a reworking based on, um, of propane, based on what our spend has been. We dropped a thousand out of building maintenance, um, and then dropped some of the little miscellaneous things down at the end there. The custodial supplies and seminars.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we move twenty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the Budget Committee for reapproval, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Jewett, discussion. My only question, Jason, and I assume it is the case, uh, Jack was fine with his reductions and.
Yeah, we talked about building, and, you know, honestly, the custodial supplies are often charged over to general supplies in the next department anyway, so.
Okay, forty-three twelve dot ten, road maintenance. There's a few changes in here, you wanna walk us?
Yeah, um, we revisited, uh, some of the numbers, um, Jack was comfortable reducing the culvert replacement line, um, the catch basin cleanouts, um, we had, the benchmark that was being used there was way too high, so this will get us the, uh, annual cleaning of, uh, half of the basins, which is what we had anticipated.
We do wanna be, do it every year, right, so half and half, okay.
Right. Right, right. Um, and vehicle fuel is, again, this is just, this is just diesel, and, you know, recalculated the thirty-two hundred gallons based on what our usage pattern has been.
And the, the set rate you got from the.
And the same, the same rate, it is the same rate as the others, yes.
Okay, I'll move the bottom line of fifty, yeah, bottom line of five hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to be reapproved by the Budget Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So why is Jack now comfortable reducing these, where he wasn't comfortable reducing them before?
Um.
And of course, that makes the assumption that Jack would have come in with a reduced number if he was comfortable with it.
We took, I, we, we took a closer look at where we were over, over the course of the year, I mean, part of, part of the issue had been, uh, you know, is on the catch basin, uh, the cleanout, uh, and replacement, um, you know, the starting point had just been, I, you know, Jack's request was, I need kind of what I had last year. As we dug into it further, one of the things that we realized has been, over the past several years, charges for the contract service for cleanout and physical reconstruction of replacement, bills have kind of gone between both of those, so looking at the history, kind of skewed the, skewed the base higher than it needed to be, so we went back and pulled the bills and said, what do you really need, this is where we really needed to be.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain, motion carries four, zero, zero. There was no change in street lighting.
No change in street lighting.
Solid waste?
Solid waste.
The siege insurance adjustments, right?
Uh, health and dental, um, revisit the, uh, equipment repair and maintenance, um, I think we can take some more, more out of that based on what our routine, you know, that covers our routine costs and gives us some amount for the unexpected. The lion's share of our spend this year was based on the, uh, unusual skid steer expense, so I think we have, I think that's a safe number.
And Dave's, Dave's comfortable with the skid steer is solid now, and it's not gonna require some other things?
For the moment.
Like a rock.
Yeah, 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 I mean, e- everything's going well, now, of course, I will say that, and it will break tomorrow, but, 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 you know, so far, you know, he's been very pleased, he has no issues.
But we know that it has to be funded, we can deal with it.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Um. Uh, Budget Committee suggested a, uh, reduction in the, in the demolition material line, um, you know, we've taken a look at that, I, um, you know, that's probably, that's, that's an acceptable number, we have a few more months under our belt now, when, you know, Dave and I proposed those numbers, it was based on data through August, so, um.
We're slipping into, though, we're just matching the Budget Committee numbers.
We, we, we are in some cases, however, again, you know, there are times that when we prepare and you first approve numbers based on the best data we have in August into September, that was our best estimate at the time, um, where, with the.
So you're saying this decrease is a decrease.
Based on run.
Based on new numbers, or?
Yeah, based on how.
Based upon.
Based on how the rest of the year has played out so far. Um, and looking at the analysis that the Budget Committee did, when they looked at it, said, okay, I, that's, that's a reasonable number based on, we know more now.
So we're saying we're not gonna have sort of fifty tons of, what's, what is the number? So we're saying we're not gonna have sorry on fifty tons of, what's, what is the number you're basing that number on now? So we we've done, if I remember my history, the seven fifty was kind of there.
Mm-hmm.
Because there, it looks like they're backing us out to about seven hundred tons, I think. Now, this was a math problem for us, right? We said we had seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty tons on average, leaving that built, that facility every year.
Yeah. I mean, we are, I mean, we're, we're expecting now to be somewhere. Somewhere in the vicinity of finishing this year at about an eighty-five thousand dollar spend.
And I know that tracks with the chart, because I know we presented, we presented a data chart of all the traction and that, so if we're trending lower, then we're trending lower, but.
Then that, that is, again, you know, we're, we're, we have the benefit of more data in hand, so, um.
Good enough, that's the last change, right?
I think that's the last change.
So I'll make a motion, we move to the, move to the Budget Committee for reapproval, bottom line for forty-three twenty-one dot ten, solid waste, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bork. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four zero zero. There was no change in health, no change in mosquito, no change in.
Health agencies is the next one.
Yeah, health agencies. Okay, so this is where we're gonna disagree with the Budget Committee.
Oh, the, um, you had, you had taken the twenty-five hundred dollars as requested by the agency. Uh, Budget Committee reduced it to the two thousand thirteen level, noting, everything else you moved out to the article, the other agencies, you didn't adjust to their new rate. So they felt, um, that they'd keep the same rate. Okay.
Yep, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it at twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Now, yeah, so.
There's no, there's no, there's no need to revote, that was your vote before.
That's our recommendation and we're gonna keep it there. That's what will be in our paperwork.
Yeah.
No change in welfare. Uh, change in parking rec, so forty-five twenty dot ten, parking recreation.
Let's see, a move of telephone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, reduction of capital outlay. Um. Furniture fixtures. Uh, Budget Committee noted the mileage line had not been used and it probably didn't make sense to keep budgeting it.
Now, do we know why it's not being, I know that was a question, we had no answer for him, but why is it not being used? There's, there's an employee that's being paid and he's using his own vehicle, as far as I know, to run back and forth. He's just not putting in for it, doesn't want it, or?
Has not been requested.
What line do you want?
Uh, eight-ten.
Eight-ten, yeah. So Budget Committee removed it to zero, I mean, moves it to one. One dollar. So we, are we gonna accept that or are we gonna modify it back to what we asked for?
You can't modify the Budget Committee's numbers. The Budget Committee sets the budget.
No, but we have other changes, so we are, we're basically reopening it, we're reducing it and moving it around, but are we gonna put it, put that number back at seven, at at three-three like we originally asked for? Have Budget Committee revote on their change and if they wanna remove it again, they'll remove it again. It's up to you if you wanna accept it, but. I mean, if it's not being used, it's not being used, but I like to understand why an employee would use their own gas and fuel to do work for the town. Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion that we move eighty-four eight eighty to the Budget Committee for reapproval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further, uh, discussion, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four zero zero. There's nothing for us to do on the library.
Oh, yeah, there is.
You gotta take a vote on it.
Oh, because of the health insurance.
Actually, technically, you don't need to take a vote on it, but that's just, the Budget Committees.
Okay, well, there's, there's two things here. One is the Budget Committee reduce the, um, from the request that you had passed forward was two hundred two thousand six eighty. Budget Committee reduced that to two hundred thousand nine fifty-eight. Second thing is, uh, library has notified us that as of the beginning of the year, um, they will need to be providing health and dental insurance per their policies for two employees that was not included when they prepared and submitted their budget to us before. So, um, the additions you say that I flagged there for health and dental, um, are, um, need to be incorporated into their, uh, overall appropriation request number.
Okay. So.
Are they full-time people?
No, they're part-time.
Do our part-time people, like Joan, get?
Fifty, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Partial, right?
Yep, fifty-fifty, it's the same.
It's within our policy, it's within their policy and within our policy.
Yeah, it's, it's the same, it's the same, they mirror us, but the problem is, you know, when it turns up, they don't have, I mean, in our case, if we had one or two people, we could maneuver in a five million dollar budget. It's hard to absorb, it's hard to absorb twenty-two, twenty thousand dollars in a two hundred thousand dollar budget.
So was that an oversight when they prepared the budget?
No, it was not, it was not an issue for them in September.
I'll make a motion to move two hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars.
A second.
For consideration by the Budget Committee for library.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Mrs. Jewitt. Further discussion?
Tom, they have to be fair, if you're given.
Well, the Budget, Budget Committee didn't have that number, so I'm sure they'll be fair.
It wasn't their fault, really.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four zero zero.
No further changes.
Yeah, I didn't think it was. All right, so that concludes the two thousand fourteen budget revisions, as we know today.
So, based on all of that, that takes you to a bottom line of five million one hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
Say that again, five million?
Five, five million one hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
Reduction from our original requested, right?
A reduc, yeah, your original requested was five million one hundred forty-two thousand five twenty-two.
If the Budget Committee, well, I don't wanna do that, never mind.
What?
No.
Okay.
Don't want to do that.
Yeah, don't.
Be nice.
No, 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 I, no, no, okay, so moving on to the next topic for the evening, warrant articles.
I have a question on warrant articles. When are we gonna get the final wording for the warrant articles?
That was my question.
That's important.
And I'm really sitting here saying to myself, I don't even wanna look at warrant articles until I get them.
Yeah, so Jason, I meant to ask you this earlier today, but, um, what action you, when you, when you added it to the agenda after I talked to you, what actions you want out of it?
Well, there's a couple of these monetary ones that have options related to them. I can wordsmith until I'm blue in the face and get everybody to 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 approve them. The question I have is, when I have three different alternatives, I need to understand what direction you're leaning, so I know which article I'm writing.
So which regard, whether or not we take about a general fund versus tax raising versus?
You know, well, you know, the pavement improvement one, you sent some questions you backed last time, so, you know, town hall roof is, it is what it is, that's, that's, that's the language. Uh, human service agencies, that's the language. Um, town hall police HVAC, that's the language. My note simply is that if I can pin down a number to reduce the cost, because I can get a sense from PS and H how much they'll, they'll make available, we may be able to reduce that number slightly. The pavement improvement program, um, you had asked to look at bonds and other strategies, so we need to have a conversation about that. Uh, stormwater, there were some questions about what direction to go, we talked about setting up trust funds.
Instead of saying what there was and what there wasn't, right, so town hall, we know that's a set price, the question is, is we taking this from a tax raise or are we, are we gonna try to get the funds out of the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
What is the board's pleasure? Leave it the way it is and raise taxes to 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 resolve it, or do we take it out of general fund?
I'd say take it out of general fund personally. Forty-three thousand.
I thought it was twenty thousand before, how's it gone to four?
This is town hall, not.
The town hall roof.
The, the meeting houses already been taken care of, that's coming out of general fund, we approved that last time, that was the only one we were able to agree on.
I say, I say general fund.
I thought we did it last year, town hall, or this year.
Talent.
Talent.
Town hall, I'm sorry.
John's, uh, Massachusetts accent.
Sorry.
Yeah, I remember now we did.
Massachusetts, I guess it isn't.
Billy Ricker.
Bill Ricker.
Billy Ricker.
No, it's Bill Ricker.
I work down there, I know how it is.
All right, so Jason, we're not gonna, we don't need to make a motion on that, we're just gonna be.
Nope, if you want it from fund balance, that's fine.
We'll approve the, the final one.
And I just wanna confirm, at some point, we're gonna vote these, formally vote these.
Yep, after the wording is done, now we decide general fund, you're gonna do that one, where does general fund give us the wording, we're gonna vote on it. Budget Committee hasn't voted on them neither, the Budget Committee's seen them in the rough format, but they, you know, they haven't done what they, they.
Right, I mean, purpose and dollars, if, as long as we have purpose, dollars and source, there's a little bit of wordsmithing at the edges, but, you know.
Okay, so our next meeting, we'd like to have the final form of what we agree on.
That's fine, that's.
I would like to know before we do a lot more voting on when we're going to talk about increase of a one percent or whatever for town employees that are non-union.
I have that also on my list for tonight.
To me, that is important.
Yep.
And I would like to know that, I think that they've been two years now without any increase, and we're seeing other departments are getting contracts and all, three and four, and possibly school, five.
Well, the contract is, for the town site has no increase in year one.
What?
The contract for the PD, which is the only one impacting town employees, has no increase.
For the second year it has.
For the year, for year one. Second one does.
Yeah, so that's, you count the whole contract, you don't count just one thing.
All right, so moving, moving, huh?
No, you're saying they get two percent.
Yeah, two percent. So moving on, human resources, I mean, yeah, human resources, human services, this was, uh, the, the.
This was the article you used last year, so.
Child abuse.
I think it should just raise and appropriate, uh, from taxes.
Yep.
Oh, let's use fund balance.
No. Well, maybe, I don't know, that's, that's.
No, that's fine, I'm fine, I'm just.
Town hall police station? Do we use fund balance or do we? This is a three-year project, so we're somewhat committing ourselves to fund, we're committing ourselves to it, to me, at least, next three years pulling out a fund balance.
That's the air conditioning?
Yeah, it's, it's a program to fix, fix and replace the air conditioning over three, over three years, it's over three years. So that's the first year.
Well, why don't we make it as a three-year?
Well, actually, my que, yeah, that's a good question. Is it gonna be, is it fifteen thousand every year, or is it fifteen, because I think, I know you saw the first sentence for the first year.
Yeah, I think it was like fifteen, there's one lower year, but it's, it's about forty thousand cumulative.
Why do you wanna keep going back and forth and?
Uh, be, why, I started with the partial because my thought was not using fund balance. My thought was, do, do it in phases, not raise it all at once. Um, and if I was gonna do it, that was, that was the approach to take.
Okay, so the question I will ask is, if we assume that you're gonna do it in phases, and this is phase one, what is the impact of you stopping at phase one?
Uh, it's fine, uh, because it's three, what, what we've looked at is we, it's compartmentalized, we do the admin side, we do this, this central, and then we do the PD.
We're addressing the first one, it's the one source system, which.
The, yeah, we started over there, and we actually, the other reason I phased it was I pushed the PD out only because if we, you know, as we look at facilities, you may be two or three years out and decide that you have a different vision for what that space is gonna be. I don't wanna spend money on an air con, on HVAC designed for one function if you move it to a different function.
It's fine then, I, I would say leave it as phase one and the voters have a chance to, to look at what we're doing going forward.
So the fund balance or taxes, or raise it to appropriation and taxes? Take it from fund balance?
Top doesn't win, it's not that large of a amount, I would say. Fund balance to me is fine.
Okay. No agreement?
I hate to spend fund balance, uh, talking about it until the end, and, and I know that bills, I can remember one year them coming in.
We're not talking about this year's appropriation, we're talking about what's in our bank account today. So.
What you're saying is, Pat, we're gonna spend money that the town has available in its accounts.
At the time.
Yeah, it's not, it's got totally nothing to do with the budget.
So one point.
It's the one point five million we have hanging out from prior year.
Year-end, I would say to you.
Yeah, no, no, no.
All right, so write it up as fund balance.
Fund balance for that one, okay.
Payman improvement program. To me, that's gotta be an appropriation, this is, I mean, let's go to the taxes and see if they wanna agree with it.
Well.
That's my take.
What were the options that you filed?
Okay, um, you know, what we, one of the i- ideas and what we started with was matching the block grant, and so going to the hundred and seventy thousand a year, and, you know, we would have to be asking that year over year. Second option, which is sort of a moderate option, is knowing that the hundred and seventy is lower than, you know, Jack and I are recommending, but a hundred and seventy is the big jump. Do you gradually increase in your operating budget, the pavement improvement line with, um, and, you know, gradually increase at a sixty thousand dollar a year jump baked into the operating budget rather than a freestanding article? Uh, just one of the concerns last time was, gee, we, we rate, we are asking this every single year and we have a plan and this sets us back. Um, that said, also adding the whole lump all at once, probably not the most palatable idea either. Uh, the other option is, we had talked about, um, a bond, and you had asked, you wanted some numbers on that. So I provided, um, a, uh, schedule, a bond amortization schedule of what would happen if you borrowed a million dollars, bond payable over seven years. Um, annual payments were about a hu, started at about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and decreased to a final payment of about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The cumulative interest paid over that period is about, is, would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Now, one of the other ways to look at this too is if you had the million dollars in hand, you could go chip away at, you know, what we had identified is probably three or four years of projects all at once. Um, you know, over, the context that at least, you know, you know I was less than enthusiastic about this at your last meeting, as a sort of, I thought about it a little bit more. I mean, one of the things I started looking at was, over the past seven years, the price of asphalt has increased over sixty percent. So if a portion of that rate of increase continues going forwards, borrowing and completing the work next year, rather incrementally over seven years, should be more cost-effective because you'd get more bang for your buck rather than spacing it out, unless the price of asphalt doesn't increase by more than eleven and a half percent. Your cost of borrowing is eleven and a half percent of borrowing that million over seven years, the cumulative interest cost. So. A thought, you know, you had asked about it, um, it still requires a jump in expenditure, it requires obviously getting the three-fifths vote and bonding and all of that. Um, that said, if you look at the four point six million dollars in today's dollars that we flagged of work to bring things up to, um, the good level score, it's something to think about.
So, I, I mean, I personally like the idea of getting five years, three years worth of, three years, three years worth of road repairs done within the year, because I think some of our roads are beginning to deteriorate and the twenty-five year outlook doesn't look promising. Um, but, uh, we would str, I mean, my question would be, can we structure two warrants in a sense that we go in and we ask for the bond right to do it, and what we're doing, and the roads we're gonna plan on doing? Identify all that stuff, right? If not in the warrant, but when we ta, we talk about it deliberately and we act, we talk while we're doing it, it's identified. Can we have another warrant that says, if this one doesn't pass, if this passes, we can, you know, still get the hundred and seventy thousand dollars, try to get two years worth of work done? I'm, I'm still trying to, I'm still trying to get Jack, you know, our road agent, enough funds to deal with three or four of the roads that he's planned out for the last couple of years. Can we have a, you know, a negating or if this one, and if they're none, kind of thing in warrants? But.
I think I've seen it before.
Maybe, yeah, um, I can ask, sure. So you're saying, you, you would look at the bond as an article and then sort of the next article would be, if bond article does not pass, shall we raise and appropriate?
To address.
Right, right, and this. Right, right, and this, and we wouldn't raise it if the bond article passes.
Correct, correct. I'm, I'm, I'm giving a choice, right? I think people recognize that there are several infrastructure issues around roads that we need addressed, especially when, you know, you drive around. It gives them an option, we can do the small project in one year and do a couple of roads, or we can take, get the funding for, you know, three, four years' worth of road projects and get it done in one year. Again, it's a choice. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, I mean, I, I think it would be worth trying it that way, if we can do it. And I like, I personally like the bond idea, just because I, I have a lot of faith in our, our current road agent to get the work done, he's, he understands what roads are a priority, and giving them the option to try to get all that kinda work done in, in a, you know, year's timeframe, would put us in a better, put us in a better path than closer to where we wanna be, but, stretching out all these roads over twenty-five years is just a crap lot. What's the board's pleasure?
I don't think that's a bad idea, my, my only thought on it is, they vote no on the bond, eventually they gotta vote no on the other one as well.
And they would've voted no on it, just it's gonna, it's on anyway. It ga, it gives them an option to try, and if there's enough folks that, you know, if, again, we have to do the due diligence to educate our community why we're asking for it, right? We just can't come out and ask for it and say, we want a million dollar bond because we say so. We've gotta understand, they gotta be able to look at our inventory and say, this is what's really going on with our roads, these roads, we're all, the Bethany, Fitchfield, all the roads were built around the same time. So, all the roads that are filling with the ones that, you know, they're all gonna fill together, so, this is the one way to get, at least get a start on it, and start offsetting some of these repairs. And, you're right, they could say no to both, or they could say no to one, and, you know, either way, if we didn't offer, offer them a choice, they wouldn't have another option. Again, it's just, you know, my thought, and they also have any, any pleasure or desire?
My personal thinking is a million dollars, um, a million dollar bond is much more than, I think the town is gonna accept, uh, number one. And number two, I'm not sure that there is any need to do all of this all at once, these roads have been accumulating wear and tear over multiple years, and I'm sure that in five years,
Another road.
Some new board is gonna sit there and say, jeez, our roads are falling apart, like we are. So, I'm more along the lines of trying to do something.
Every year?
Gradually, and if, put it in the operating budget, to me, is fine, I don't have a problem with that, as long as we, you know, put it in there, or if you wanna do a warrant article, do a warrant article.
Well, I, yeah, I think if we put, if we say, also, put a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the budget, in the budget, the budget committee will pull it off, ask us to go to warrant, because we've had, had the bad, the past practice of putting it to warrant.
Go with the warrant, I don't have a problem with that either.
I, yeah, and, and, you know, I suggest putting it in the budget, I wouldn't suggest going to the, the full one-seventy, I mean, my suggestion was think about kind of, put in sixty, and then add another sixty, and then add another sixty, you're, eventually get there. Because otherwise, you're asking every year for the one-seventy, and one of the things that you guys talked about last time was, do you really wanna set yourself up every year to ask the same question?
A suggestion, Jason, would be that we construct a fund, I was gonna say capital reserve, but it's not a capital reserve fund, that have, this money would drop into out of the warrant, so that if there is five thousand dollars left over, that what ends up happening is, it doesn't drop back into the general fund, it stays in there, and keep that in perpetuity, and that the board of selectmen are available, are authorized to expend out of that fund. So that if you do sixty thousand dollars this year, as an example, and you spend fifty-five thousand, there's five thousand that's left in that fund, that could be spent next year to tend it upon the authorization of the, the board, and that anything that's gonna be appropriated would drop into that. Do you see what I'm saying?
We are, I gotta think about, I, I do, I gotta think about that, whether that may add in a layer of complexity that we may not need. You are right, but when you look at the even span, I mean, you know, when, I mean, when Jack and I played with current year numbers, we took that three forty target, knowing full well that that was the even target we wanted to get to. But, in some years, based on what we know now, you'd bank a little of it, and then carry it forward the next year. The thought was that, you know, in our view was, that, because it's, it's all within one year, one-year cycle, that it's doable as an encumbrance.
But, but here's my point, if you put it in the budget, budget year fiscal year ends, and if you don't spend it, it goes into the general fund.
In, in, unless the board encumbers it for the partial on the project, it requires the discipline of a future board.
The other thing is, if you make it a warrant article, if you don't spend it, it still drops into the general fund after the end of the year. So, my point is, make it a special fund that lives going forward, and you don't have to keep going to the voters to create that fund, but you would create the need for the board of selectmen, future boards, to.
Expender.
Appropriate the money through some type of warrant article, or, or what have you. Or, maybe you can even say any unspend, unfunded, how do I wanna say this, unspent funds that are appropriated for highway would drop into that.
Uh, how about we make it?
Do you understand?
I understand what you're saying, I'm worried about it collapsing under its own weight.
So, if you, John, if, if it's John, if Jack, same difference.
His name is John, yeah.
But, but, but if you have a highway department budget of, say, five hundred thousand dollars, and he spends four hundred and fifty, that fifty drops into it.
That's not a bad idea, I mean, 'cause, to be honest, our goal is to, is to work on the, you know, repairing the roads and stuff, and if this allows us to put some money away without having to keep on re-appropriating or asking for it.
You don't wanna keep going to the voters and asking for it, because it runs up the tax rates. And, and I'm, I, and I'm not saying that, that we don't have to repair the roads, what I'm saying is, appropriate the money once and use it.
So, would we construct one warrant to set up the fund, with the statement that all, all appropriations for the highway department would fund this going forward? And then construct the warrant for the hundred and seventy thousand dollars and don't say that, or would, would we have to?
I think you'd have to do two warrants, one would be the appropriation, the other would construct funds. Or, actually, you could do another one, and, and to create the fund, and then further to raise and appropriate.
Well, then, if it fails, it fails, I think if you, I think if you, if you put a warrant out that's freestanding for the fund, I think that would pass, this sounds like we're, you know, it's saving monies or savings to save for future, right? People probably pass that, 'cause there's no tax, there's no tax implication. If you put it with a reappropriation to raise, it's, the tax purpose, it won't pass.
See, if you keep asking us what we think of warrant article.
And you, and, and may I remind you that this is why, why don't I have a completed, finished language?
Don't worry about it, this is, this is why, come on.
Because we're still figuring out what direction we wanna go. Now, a couple thoughts, one is the automatic wipe of unspent highway department budget ideas, uh, funds, nice idea, I worry about binding a future board, or what happens in the year when the highway department underspends, and another department overspends, because you have an issue. You should be able at, to leave that authority to a future board to have the discipline to move that. I mean, we're, for, basically, we're doing that, I mean, one of the things you're gonna get back is, you know, year end for me is gonna be, things that we haven't spent in the highway budget, you're, you know, you're gonna get the, the request that we set that aside for paving. That's the mechanical process we're doing.
But, we can't, we can't encumber those funds without.
I have, I'll have a project, I'll have a project. Now, second thing is, so I, I, I wanna think about whether that really is the right answer, in terms of the, if you're raising it as this, the issue of, okay, we have a freestanding article, we raise a hundred and seventy, we're only spending a hundred and fifty this year, what happens to the other twenty? You can fix that in an article without creating a separate fund, by simply making it a non-lapsing warrant article, and you put a, a date two years out on it, um, and you will have spent it in two years. When we get to one of my other articles, you'll see a non-lapsing fund. That may be the way to protect an individual warrant article year, without going through the exercise of creating a whole new fund.
If it achieves, to me, if it achieves the same thing and it saves, that's fine. I don't know, like I said, I don't know.
The piece that it doesn't have is that sort of year, that would solve your, don't lose the warrant article piece, what it doesn't solve is the, within the operating budget piece. And I'm not sure that you necessarily really wanna create that expectation that you're always gonna wipe the savings from the highway department.
It's probably not a bad idea not to.
You know, I could see that being an area for future conflict between boards, road agents, and others.
Yeah, alright, so we're gonna reword this to be a raise and appropriate with a non, as a non-lapsing.
Yeah, are we doing, wha, are we contemplating the bond at all, the conditional, are we dropping that?
What is the board's pleasure? I'm not married to either one, I just, my point being is, you know, I think, getting the, getting, getting, getting three years' worth of roads fixed in one year would, was, you know, it felt like a good way to go. If the rest of the board doesn't wanna do it that way, that's fine. So, leave the warrant as is, or do we construct a second warrant to include the bond?
A million dollars, sounds like a lot of money.
Well, it's not really.
But, I'll tell ya, we're gonna have Albuquerque, is, when it, that starts to go, it's going to go, because there's a lot, there's starting to go in places now.
In the north end.
And Cutler Road that was done not too long ago, less than five years ago, wasn't it? I don't know exactly, I can't remember.
No, that's actually, that's, that's one of the ones that we would expect would be doing, that, that has a, yeah, that has one of our lower scores.
Robert Avenue is getting bad, there's a lot of traffic, plus, we have to have some of these side streets that, maybe there isn't much traffic, but it really isn't fair to them not to have their road fixed either. I mean, some of these side roads and cul-de-sacs.
So, what do you wanna do?
I don't know, I, I almost would like to borrow the million, and, and then go ahead, and if we find out that, that something, a miracle happens, and happens to come way down, uh, Hot Top and Semat, and all, boy, I think, boy, we better take a chance and do some of these.
Because, yeah, so because we're not voting on them tonight, 'cause we're working for rewording, why don't you construct the warrant for the million as a bond? Construct, reconstruct the hundred and seventy thousand dollar one, the way we just discussed. Let's, let's have a couple, let's have another week or so, we'll be on it, and we'll make a final decision before we go forward with it.
Alright.
I think, there's.
So, so I'll, I'll write three, then I'll write the bond, I will write the, the conditional, if yes, if no on the bond, then yes on one-seventy, and then one without the conditional language, so.
And then we'll decide after some.
Alright, yep.
Let's give, let's give the, let's, let's give the board a little more time to think about it.
Yep.
And we'll make a final decision. Alright, drain, uh, drainage and stormwater planning, that one, I thought we were all set on.
Uh, no, we had talked about trying to parcel, parcel out some of the information a little bit, um, I, I asked, uh, to see if I could get a greater breakdown, I shared some of that with you. The Thanksgiving holiday kinda bogged them down in getting me a ballpark back. What I did was, the two options there, one is a, uh, non-lapsing article, so, we would have the ability to deal with the EPA regulations if and when they come, um, and I made it non-lapsing through the end of two thousand sixteen. Um, and the second one was to, uh, put it into a trust fund. And, again, same purposes, make the selectmen the agents of the fund, the selectmen would retain the ability to allocate that money and enter into contracts as they see fit for the scope of the work, uh, necessary. And, again, that solves your timing issue as well, depending on when all of this happens, how much advance you wanna do, how much you just wanna focus on the EPA permit when it, permit when it comes out.
Okay, so, which is, so, which pleasure do we wanna take? Both accomplish the same thing, right? We're just arguing against creating a trust fund, so, you know, from a, from a management perspective, from a management in the back office, what's, what's gonna be more easier for the town?
I would say, in, in this case, I would argue that the trust fund is probably preferable. Well, oh, okay, well, no, no, and, and, and here's the reason why, is there are so many moving parts to what, what we can do and what we may be required to do. I know that in time, you will spend multiples of that fifty thousand dollars in complying with the EPA permit. I can't tell you when, and I can't tell you in what form yet. So, by putting it in the trust fund, you give yourself the ability to deal with it when it comes up, the selectmen remake, retain the ability to say, yes, this is a logical use of the trust fund for this next step. My concern about option one is, it buys you the time, but it does sort of lock you in, and, you know, I don't know where this timetable is going. Let's say, you know, remember the last time this permit came out, and I don't think this is gonna happen this time, but the last draft permit was two thousand eight, being issued imminently. If you had done option one then, money would've disappeared. I mean, your worst case is, if this gets punted out two more years, or, you know, doesn't go anywhere, you're not depositing the trust fund, and it sits there, someday, you will have to use it.
So, we okay with option two?
I say option two.
You're ready with option two?
No.
Okay.
I think you should change the wording from documenting, repair, and planning to include somewhere in there engineering.
Okay.
But you're okay with option two as far as the path? That's all, okay.
Yeah.
So, let's make those adjustments, are we okay with this is, is, this is gonna be a, uh?
Not dang you.
If you don't take care of it, you may well generate, dangay.
Yeah, okay, are we okay, we're okay with the appro, the raise, the raise that not come out of general fund? He's over there, he's over there telling you to take general fund.
What, where?
Fifty thousand. We're gonna raise and appropriate it, or can we get it out of general fund? Using Frank's theory, it's a small amount of dollars.
Pretty soon, these small dollars add up.
And so far, I've got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, now.
The smallest of million, million-five.
Right, but, okay, you, you're making a small to negligible deposit into that fund this year. You have also kind of set an expectation and pattern of around two, i- if you're not committing the two hundred thousand-ish that we've committed the past couple of years of fund balance to offset taxes, just in general, you're gonna have a backdoor rise in the tax rate. So, what, what I, I just wanna.
Same result, this is what it goes, this is me, this is the same result. We're, we're, we're deferring, raising more tax dollars, because we have the money in the bank, and so the result's the same.
But, if you say all of these are zero, and you talk about estimated tax rates, like we did la, at this town meeting this year, saying we expect to put two hundred thousand dollars in from fund balance, you know, you're counting a lot of money.
Well, I wouldn't say that this year, but.
Then your tax rate, then, but if you don't say that this year, then your projected tax rate, which is already gonna go up, is gonna go up even more, because two hundred thousand dollars is gonna go up in smoke.
So, what's the, we've heard Ja, Jason's argument, what's the board's pleasure? Do we wanna do it as an appropriate and raise, or come out of general fund? I was looking for consensus, one way or the other. Frank?
I'm not a consensus, I'm, I think he should raise it, I mean, it's, that's a large amount of money.
That's fine, that's all I was looking for.
So, so the difference.
Duh, 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 moving on, we've already dealt with the old town hall already.
So, forty-two is not, but fifty is large.
I, I've.
You wanna go back through?
No.
No.
Alright, fire, fire, we already took care of the town, old town hall, uh, fire department, air pack.
Fire department, air pack, yes, and this was one that, um, I apologize, has not been on the list before, Frank dropped in my lap and said, hey, okay, and all the grant application is finally together on this. You know, we, we did talk about this back when he met with us on his budget.
I knew there was, I knew there was a grant, he was trying to write to do it, but.
Right.
So, he's got the grant posted.
This is, this is the regional grant for, um, replacing all of the SCBA equipment, the total cost for us to replace all of it at once would be a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. What the grant, um, our share in the grant would be twenty-one thousand dollars, so.
So, for twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars, we get the hundred and eighty-six thousand?
We would get the hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars worth of equipment.
So, here, here's, here's the problem, DRA will never agree with this, as worded. You're gonna have to raise and appropriate a hundred and eighty-six thousand, of which.
Nope.
X. Okay.
Did Jerry run it?
And then they'll come back.
Nope, nope, um, and I will be happy to eat my words if I'm proven wrong, but, um.
I've been involved in that before, and DRA did not buy off on it.
Yeah, well, we'll see, we're never gonna see the one eighty-six. Yeah, well, we'll see. We're never going to see the one eighty-six though, so they just need to understand that because the one eighty-six, so.
The one eighty-six is a grant. It's been given to the town. You have to raise and appropriate it. You have, you have to appropriate it.
Right, but, but I can't appropriate an unknown grant. So I would only appropriate the one eighty-six if we ever got it. Now, what, the way this is written right now is if the grant is not approved, these funds would be applied to direct purchase of the equipment. And I also made it non-lapsing, so there'd be two years, um, so it wouldn't go away for timing.
Well, okay.
So that's the concept. The concept is I'm trying to raise our match. And if the grant doesn't come through, if we've raised the match, then we have it to put toward whatever strategy we come up with for making up the difference.
So, see if DRA will approve the wording.
Yep.
I mean, it makes sense. Alright. Next up is the police contract, which it is what it is. And that's it. So Jason, next meeting you'll have all these reworded and we should be able to vote on all of them if not. We should be able to vote on all of them next week, uh, two weeks, sorry.
Yep. And I finally had some time to write almost all of the other ones we talked about. So my, my plan is that I will have the whole ball of wax going to council, the monetary, non-monetary.
Okay. Once they're approved by, you, you'll get, will council very soon the non, the monetary ones before we meet? Will you be able to get to the council prior to our meeting?
To what? The next meeting? Your next meeting? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I don't want to have to go back to council and ask where.
No, no. My, my plan is to get all of these to council this week.
Cool. Alright, any other questions or anything else regarding warrants? Okay, hearing none. There was no, there was nothing else on other items. There was no other business. There was no items moved sent. Uh, selectman reports. This is Jewett. Anything you want to share with the board and the public?
Yesterday, uh, a group of five of us volunteers came to the town hall about quarter to nine and we stayed till after twelve and had wonderful cooperation with them and all. And we had been collecting donations for our servicemen to send boxes. And we have twenty servicemen, I shouldn't say all men, two women. One woman is on USS Boxer, a lieutenant, and the rest are all in the country, uh, home. I think there are eleven of them that I'll deliver to their home several days before Christmas, but I don't want to deliver them now because they aren't even home. They're still on, on boardship or in the army or wherever they are and all. And we didn't get as much material as we ordinarily do, but I can understand why. Financing the economy of this country is not good and I felt badly and all. We had a lot of fun doing it and a lot of work and. Uh, Jack Elgio of Small Tube has volunteered to mail the eight that are going to be mailed out of, nine out of the country, which I think is remarkable because I know I mailed one last year and it cost me nine dollars and ninety-nine cents to mail it. And, uh, so they cost quite a bit of money to mail. But it was a good thing and I certainly want to thank the people in the town that donated. It was wonderful. And the fourth grade class from GMS, um, made, wrote letters to the servicemen and women. And some of them, uh, drew pictures and all. So every fellow, uh, girl in the service got at least two pieces of property from the school that they had made and all. And I read some of them and, oh, it kind of breaks your heart. They were talking about their pets and they lost their pet and things like that. And they said that, please stop and visit us when you come back to the States and all. And I had a lot of sad cases too. I had one parent that told me their child had gotten back from Afghanistan in October and is heading back shortly after Christmas. And I thought that they wouldn't be sending over more. But that was a, a heartbreaker for her, I'm sure. But that boy is going to be home for Christmas, which is wonderful. So again, I'd like to say thank you to everybody and the cooperation was great. And we're going to be delivering the rest shortly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Byron?
Planning board meeting coming up on Sep., uh, excuse me, December seventeenth. I will be out of town. Kevin, I don't know, are you going to be able to make it?
I'll be, yep.
So I will not be there. I will be out of town from the fifteenth through the nineteenth. But, um, that's the next meeting. There is really nothing else that's about it. Mr. Bar?
Uh, just want to say thanks to the rec committee for, uh, putting on the first Turkey Bowl in town. Uh, myself was unable to be there, but I heard, uh, it was a great turnout this year and, uh, word is they're looking forward to doing it again next year. So, um, just wanted to put, say thanks to them for putting that on for the town.
How many entered? Do you have any idea?
There's like eighty, I don't know, eighty-five people, ninety people or something showed up.
I saw some pictures. It looked like it was a lot of fun.
Looked like it was a lot of fun.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
Nope.
The only other, is the budget committee meeting tomorrow night and Thursday night. Uh, focus, the last couple of budget meetings has been the school board or the school district and their budgets, so. Busy time of year.
Can I do one more thing? No, no, it's, it's only going to be a request that, um, on the, on the site, you will see a page that I built, um, for wage plan update. We need to get, we need to have that. I knew tonight we'd spend a lot of time going through budget. That's my other priority item to talk about next time. I know you had asked about something as well as this, Jewett. You would, the, what you all had asked me to do was revise the schedule with current numbers. Um, I put that together. You also had asked for a ballpark cost of implementing the schedule, uh, which I did and it made my hair turn white. Um, I came up with a few modifications. Um, I still don't think we're at a place to go yet, but I'd ask you to take a look at that, kind of look at some of the logic. I'm open to input and suggestion because my sense is that the table we have, the likely movement towards it may, may all make the most intellectual sense in the world, but it's not going to be something that we're going to be comfortable bringing forward yet. So I'm trying to figure out how do I get to the chart that is probably the ideal to what is realistic to bring forward.
Okay.
So all of those notes are there, so I'd ask that if you can look over the next week or so, give me any feedback you have on it because I'd really like to pin something down if we are going to do something.
Okay. Anything else? Nine o'clock, Jason.
Quick question.
Open the floor for public input.
Thank you.
DeGret, come forward.
Jason, DeGret, eleven Perry Court. Is the, um, New Hampshire Municipal Board Association, do they do like the New Hampshire School Board Association and have a registered lobbyist? Do you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, they lobby.
Do we segregate those funds that we provide them as part of our dues under fifteen colon five?
Nope.
Nope. That we're, we're required to under fifteen colon five to separate, to segregate all funds that come from the state, um, from those dollars that we send to any lobbyist groups? Um, and just so you know, Pat, the new, the, the school board chose not to go with the New Hampshire School Board Association this year or SARES.
Wow.
Yeah, they're going to do it on their own. Um, does the New Hampshire Municipal Association do the same as the New Hampshire School Board Association, whereas you still can access all the services but for a fee à la carte?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't lose, if we had not funded that, we don't lose their services. We just got to pay for them as we need them.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I, I missed it because I was walking out earlier, but did you say that we had seventy-five thousand left over in the year? Un, or unspent?
I'm projecting seventy thousand dollars in un, unspent funds.
And we were in the default this year, so that's seventy-five below that default number, correct? Okay. And lastly, the police vehicles we bought this year in the default budget, those are, I'm trying to remember how that's worded, but because those have to be, uh, let's see, it's a non-appro, non-appropriations clause. Did we get a non-appropriations clause for those, for that purchase?
We always do. We always do.
Because they, because the voters have to.
Correct.
Vote affirmatively for a multi-year contract. So those cars then would not be in the default budget, uh, budget this year's calculation. It would have to be in a proposed budget because they have to affirmatively vote for them, correct?
A, a, the, the portion of the lease that has been at a level that was previously funded by the town would be included. The difference between that previously funded number and the actual would not be included.
Correct. So we had a lease, we had an ongoing lease prior. This is just a continuation of that process, to your point. The difference would not be there, but the, what we had.
Right. So, so in round numbers, we had, we had twenty-five before and this is like thirty-two or twenty-nine, whatever it is. The twenty-five would carry because that's been previously approved.
Right.
The increment is, has not been approved.
And the increment is about four, is that what you said?
Uh.
Approximately. I'm just curious. No, I'm just, because it's a new concept that I was reading about the other day. And so, you know, for me as a taxpayer, I can't ever approve a multi-year or if I didn't approve a multi-year, let's say, you know, let's, the police, the police cruisers are in the budget and we said no to that, so we in effect said no to that. But really there's, we went out and bought them anyway, you know? And so I'm trying to figure out, a- again, I'm sure it's legal. I'm just, I'm trying to wrap around it in my head.
It is legal, but I think that the voters also put this board here to run the fair of the town and the town can't operate a police department without cruisers. So we're here to make the tough decisions, so we took our bottom line. We re-appropriated those number, or rebalanced the numbers to be able to achieve the safety of our town, the safety of our officers and so on and so forth, so.
I, I don't, I don't disagree you have that off, the, the New Hampshire Supreme Court was pretty clear in that. There was a case in Hampton where you're fully authorized to do that. I'm not, I don't dispute that at all.
I mean, you had a question. What's the question?
Well, the, I, he answered it was, is, it's not in the default budget. What's in the default budget is the, is the, um, what was funded last year and then the increment isn't. So if the proposed budget failed, the increment you'd have to make up.
We'd have to find someplace on the, in the bottom line of that budget. Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Any other public like to speak? Hearing none and seeing none. All closed for public input. At this point, I feel the meeting is ready to conclude. I'll take a motion.
Make motion adjourned.
Motion made adjourned, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We are now adjourned. Our next meeting is twenty-third, right? December twenty-third? Yeah. So our next meeting will be December twenty-third here at town hall. We're back on the air finally. Uh, December twenty-third here at town hall at six o'clock. Everybody have a safe week.